All right, the time is now six o'clock. I want to welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for the city of Galt for April the 15th. Mr. Smandario, can we have a report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council convened in closed session under the two items listed. The council received information from staff, discussed and provided direction for further implementation by staff, but there is no reportable action.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Here.
Councilmember Pratton?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Farmer?
Here.
If everyone could please now join us for a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Friday, April 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, April 19th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item F, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from the council? Nope, okay. Moving on to item G, presentations. Our first presentation this evening is going to be from the Consumers Fire Department by our fire chief, Felipe Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Farmer, Vice Mayor Sandu, members of the city council. Felipe Rodriguez, your fire chief. It's my distinct honor this evening to present to you a wildfire preparedness presentation. This is following the events that occurred in Los Angeles County in January. We have presented this to our board of directors and to the city of Elk Grove as well, but being that we do respond and take care of the citizens here in the city of Galt, felt it very important to provide this information also to you as a city council and to the citizens of the city of Galt. So this is our wildfire preparedness presentation. If we could, I believe I can move the slides around myself. Everything that we do surrounds around our mission, vision and values with the Consumers CSD. As you know, we provide the fire services here for this community. And I highlighted certain areas of our mission, vision and values. And number one is to enhance the quality of life of the residents here primarily. And then of course, the businesses, making sure we look after them, the visitors and the employees. But how do we do that? We protect lives, property and the environment in that order. And we do that by providing the fire suppression services, that's extinguishing our fires, emergency medical services, which is the majority of what we do. But we also provide fire prevention services and then special operations, which would be water rescue, technical rescue and hazardous materials response. Within our vision, I highlighted a certain little area there, and that's providing those exceptional services that exceed expectations. That's one of the things we want to do moving into the future. And then within the values, we have five values, but two of them really stands out for wildfire preparedness. Preparedness of this community is safety and mitigating risk and service to the community. I have a few different topics to talk about this evening. And the first one is an overview of our department, the risk of in wildfires here in the city of Galt, deployment of our resources to mitigate fires, access to sufficient water supply and hydrant inspections. And lastly is fire prevention and community readiness. The police chief will be joining me in that last section there specifically regarding evacuations. Our coverage area is 157 square miles. Now, I understand Galt might only be a portion of that, but we do cover very large areas as a consumers fire department within our district. We serve a population of 210,000, 26,000 being here in Galt. We have about 24,000 annual responses, about 3,500 are here in Galt. We do have 53 personnel on duty every single day, 365, and they respond to any parts of our district, many times coming down here to Galt. But we do have our nine fire engines, two of them are here, eight ambulances as well, two of them are here. We have a truck company, that's a very large ladder truck. We have 10 cross staff wildfire, fire, wildland firefighting units, and some of those are here in Galt as well. We do have resources here for wildland fires. We added two squads. Those are little pickup trucks that provide mainly emergency medical services here last year. And then now we have two battalion chiefs on duty every single day instead of just one. The coverage area, as you see there on the map, you see the large boundary around the perimeter is the entire district. Down on the bottom right-hand section is the city of Galt. Those are city limits surrounded in the blue dotted line. We have stations 45 and 46 here in Galt. We do have other fire engines. We have another seven of them up in Elk Grove that can come down anytime. We have mutual aid as well with the city of Lodi and Woodbridge and then other agencies like SAC Metro and other places if we were to need more resources. The risk of wildfire here in Galt, we have certain areas. If you look at the map on the left, that's the state of California. The little box at the top is Sacramento County. You see the red circle down at the bottom. That red circle down there is Palisades. That's Los Angeles County. And you'll see the different colors of the heat map. So yellow up towards Northern California, there's a lot of red spots down in Southern California. It's very dry there. There's a lot of topography, very steep elevation, and that is that area that burned down in Southern California in January. On the right side, you see the map there for our area here in Sacramento County within our district. You'll see the two areas that are, that have the circles on the right. That's during, here in Galt, and those are the areas of greater concern. So that would be out in the west side and then also down on the far right, south portion of Galt. Those are our areas that be considered moderate. But a wildfire is an unplanned and uncontrolled fire in a grassland, in a prairie or in the forest. Galt has those little influence areas that are surrounded with a red circle and areas that are at risk are in the rural area of Galt and in near any seasonal waterway. I want to make sure that you don't mistake that as equal to what's in Southern California where it's very high fire hazard severity zones. We don't have any of those in Sacramento County. We have some moderate areas and areas of influence, but we don't have a significant potential like they do down in Palisades where from sea level to the top of Palisades, it's 2,000 feet of elevation. We're pretty flat here. So very fortunate that we have, we don't have that topography that we have to worry about. We do have to make sure we have enough resources to mitigate a grassland type fire. We also have a risk for a large residential area fire if we were to have a high wind event. So that's where, similar to Southern California, they had 100 mile an hour winds sustained for hours and hours. That would be a concern for us. Fireworks, that is definitely a concern for us. Fourth of July is the day that we, you normally get about 25 to 30 fires traditionally around Fourth of July, just on that day alone, that we respond to. Where normally we'll get a fire here and there, you know, every few days during the summer, but we get about 25 to 30 within that given period of time just for us to respond to. As you know, we only have 10, nine to 10 total resources. We'll add a few extras on Fourth of July for those reasons. We have every chief officer on duty and call back personnel, but still 20 plus fires in a given day is a lot for us to handle. But we are able to mitigate those every single year, but we do get risk of fire. So we do ask that people keep the fireworks down, nothing that flies in the air or nothing that explodes on Fourth of July. Areas without hydrants are of greater risk as well than in developed areas. So all of the developed areas here in Galt have plenty of hydrants, good water supply, but the areas that are on more in the rural areas or the country, if you will, don't have hydrants. So those are of greater risk. We have to bring our own water with water tenders. Mitigation factors. Number one is always to ensure we have sufficient personnel and firefighting resources to combat any of the fires that may occur. As construction advances and we build, build out, and I know that Galt's growing a little bit, it's important that we follow those fire and building codes. We have a fire prevention division. We partner with the building department. We make sure that the houses are built accordingly and they have sufficient defensible space around them, et cetera. And any house that was built after 2010 has residential sprinklers. We're very grateful for that. Our vegetation management program, also called weed abatement, includes that. So you'll see that we'll send letters out to property owners that have high weeds traditionally, and we ask them to cut those normally right now in the month of April. And we'll follow up around the month of May before it really gets dry in June and July. We also collaborate with Sacramento County Industry Working Group on new development for homes. And as we have affordable housing being built, we make sure that everything's built accordingly and that they're built safe. We want to make sure that we have an adequate water supply and hydrant inspections and testing. So that is one thing that we partner with our partners, such as the city of Galt, to make sure that we have hydrant inspections being done and that the water supply is adequate. I could tell you right now that the water supply is definitely adequate here in the city of Galt. I believe there are 9 million gallons of water in storage, from what I remember, in water tanks, and we have plenty of water for us. In comparison, the city of Palisades had 3,000 gallons, 3 million gallons. We have 9 million gallons here in Galt alone. 3 million was that during that day when they had the fire because the reservoir was under construction. And community preparedness, that's another thing that we have to partner with our community. We have to partner with all the residents to make sure they have at least 72 hours worth of supplies in case of an emergency, an earthquake, a disaster, a wildfire, et cetera, 72 hours, and that they provide defensible space around their own homes and that they partner with us on that. Regarding deployment of resources to mitigate the fires, we have plenty of resources. We train, we have a training division. We have, like as I mentioned, 53 people on duty every single day, fully trained, licensed, everything, all paramedics. Not every single one, but the majority are paramedics and provide all kinds of fire suppression services for any types of fire. We're all risk. Something that we have done in the last few years, we've invested $11 million worth of money into new apparatus, and that's been spread out. As you see out at station 45, you'll see the brand new fire engine, you'll see new ambulances. We invest equally between Elk Grove and Galt accordingly, based on age of fire apparatus, mileage, usage, safety. And actually, one of the next ones to be replaced is engine 46. We also have the apparatus replacement plan as part of our department strategic plan. We're currently going on through accreditation. We have a strategic plan, standards of cover. We, those are living documents. They don't just sit on the shelf. We actually exercise them. Within that plan, we replace our fire engines, the fire truck when needed, our ambulance, they're all dual role with paramedics, command vehicles. So that's where all your chief officers are. The wildland fire engines that I mentioned earlier, water tenders are the ones that carry all of the water, emergency staff vehicles. I happen to drive one of those because we, I can also respond to emergencies and other auxiliary vehicles, trailers and other pickups and other things that we might need. Our apparatus and vehicles are replaced on schedule, as I mentioned, based on mileage, usage and safety. We've added 30 firefighters since 2020. I've been the fire chief since 2020. I've had the privilege of hiring that many people along with people who have retired. So it's been 60 plus for us, but 30 brand new positions since 2020. We added engine 77, the medic 77 that do come down here to, to Galt. And engine 71 from the southern portion of Elk Grove come here to Galt on a regular basis to assist with fires or any larger emergencies or freeway accidents, et cetera. We also added the squad, two of them, 71 and 74. So one is a little bit closer here and then a second battalion chief. So we have plenty of coverage for the area. We do have that standards of cover that I mentioned in our strategic plan. And as mentioned, we're, we're currently seeking accreditation. We go for our review in August of 2025, and I expect to be accredited by that time. When it comes to fires and the weather, the weather is so important to us. The National Weather Service issues fire weather watches, and that's usually a, an alert to us between 12 and 72 hours prior to an event. And if they expect it to happen the next, you know, three days or even five days out within a 12 to 72 hour period, they'll say, we have a red flag event. A red flag means something to everyone, especially in this area, because we get those during the summertime. And those are dependent on relative humidity and sustained winds over eight hours. So if you look at the relative humidity table there in the PowerPoint, the first one is that we can have a red flag warning if the relative humidity is below 9% on the left. Traditionally, we have between 9 to 28%. Those centered two rows are where we're normally at during the summertime. If we have winds that are greater than 12 miles per hour, we have a red flag event. And it can go all the way to 29 miles per hour, but your humidity has to be higher. So that's the way that that, that table works. We normally land in those two areas there, the second or the third. So when we have low humidity, which during the summer, under 20% is pretty normal, and having 105 degree weather with strong winds can happen, those are our red flag events. When that occurs, we increase our response. So the response traditionally is a couple of fire engines and a battalion chief. But when it's red flag, we'll add three fire engines, the wildland ones, a battalion chief. We add two water tenders normally, at least one for sure. And then we could special request a dozer in a helicopter, and those are on contract that we have with our partner agencies. If we have to call for additional alarms, every alarm just repeats that first alarm thereafter. So we can have plenty of resources that come, even outside of our jurisdiction. This is the mutual aid system when they come outside of our area. And the mutual aid system within Sacramento County is, is an awesome system that we have in place. It's actually throughout the state of California. But we can call for additional resources, the closest resources respond. We have a boundary, boundary less system here in Sacramento County. So wherever, whoever's needed, you just call and they just come. And if we run out of resources or we need Lodi to come a little closer, we just call for them as well, and we provide the same mutual aid to them. This is no charge for the first 12 hours. It's all part of what the taxpayers pay for. We also can pre-deploy. So resources can be sent ahead of time if we expect a red flag condition, similar to what happens in Southern California, they pre-deployed resources. We send them there ahead of time. The state will pay for that, and we can put them in position in case of a large scale emergency. That's done through the California Office of Emergency Services. And then we can request for resources outside of our area. We can go down to Southern California and ask for resources or the Bay Area or Northern California. And initially, we'll start with our surrounding counties, but then we expand all over the state of California. We have a wonderful system here. We had resources respond down to the Palisades. That's a picture of them there on the right. They were there within a few hours after that fire started. The last, second to last item is the access to sufficient water supply and hydrant inspections. These are our water agencies, SAC Water, Elk Grove Water and Galt Water down on the bottom right side. Those are the three agencies that we're partners with. And I say that word because we are partners on it. We have to make sure as the fire department that we have sufficient water and hydrants and hydrants that are inspected. The big question that's been asked of me as the fire chief, could this happen here? Well, it can happen anywhere. If you have 100 mile an hour winds and, and a topography driven wildfire, it can happen anywhere. Reality is not likely to happen. So I can assure you of that, that we're well prepared. We do have a great water supply here, and we, if you have more gallons per minute being used than what's available, 3 million gallons goes quickly when you have hundreds of homes on fire. Not a likely event to happen. I believe we, like I said, we believe we have 9 million gallons of water here in Galt. But that is something that is, we should be very proud of here in this community that you have a sufficient amount of water. Never had an issue with the, with the hydrants. We can flow 1,500 gallons a minute with any fire engine, so the gallons go quickly. And our insurance services office rating for us requires 3,500 gallons per minute for three hours. We receive 28.49 out of 30 possible points. Great water system all throughout. Also, the placement of hydrants, especially in developed areas, every few hundred feet, we've received almost a perfect score. I think the area that we can improve upon, that we've spoken to all of our partners with, is the inspection timeframe. We received one out of seven points basically, and that's the part where I think conducting annual inspection is the part where there's, and if there's any improvement, that's where it would be. So the good and the bad, it's my obligation to report to you, things that are well, our water supply, our hydrants placement, placement, but the inspections are the areas of improvement that we can do. City of Galt has 1,152 hydrants. The inspection schedule, how often are they done? Every three years, every five years? The standard is once a year, and that's currently under development. I've been working with the city manager to try to create that to be done once per year. And then we flow the hydrants about every five years. And that's a little bit tricky because people don't really like seeing water flowing out into the street. So we're a little bit more leaning on that. Maybe we'll lose some points on that one, but the inspections, you don't really have to flow much water on the inspection itself. The, I think the last slide I have for water supply and hydrant inspections is the, the report itself, and that's for us to collaborate with, with our partners, including here in the city of Galt. We're confident in that water supply system, as I mentioned. We continue to collaborate to improve, improve our ISO rating. We are currently rated as a class two fire department. Two Y is for the county areas, the, you know, more of the country areas. But out in the, in the city itself is class two. Class one is the very best you can do. We missed class one by three points. So I was pretty bummed over that. Our next evaluation is in 2027. So we're hoping to be class one at that point, which means better insurance rates for everybody. And the last section is the fire prevention and community readiness. Our fire prevention division inspected many occupancies last year. I know there's development happening throughout, happening everywhere. Plan reviews, 1,800 plus, 5100 inspections, 100% compliance with our state mandated inspections, all the schools, apartments, et cetera. And then operational permits are your higher hazard occupancies like repair garages, places of assembly, et cetera, almost all the way. That's the one that's not mandatory, but that's another area for improvement for us. And then vegetation management, over 900 properties inspected, a lot of them were here as well. And 367 issued, issued correction notices with 97% compliance. Very good, very good numbers on compliance. And then the other 11 were, were also abated as well. The evacuation plan, I will partner with my, my police chief partner here on the evacuation plan, and we have a few different bullet points and then our map itself, but I will turn it over to the police chief.
Good evening, everyone. So our evacuation plan was developed by Sacramento County in August of 2021. It includes the entire county, but specifically for our South County and the Galt community. This is in conjunction with the fire department. If we have time to stand up and activate an emergency operations center, we'll use our unified command to make decisions related to evacuation warnings. And the coordination for warnings will occur through Sacramento County Office of Emergency Services. And they will do it for notification of evacuations or warnings or any other mass notifications that need to occur. You'll see the two types of notifications you can get. You can get an evacuation warning that lets you know that there's a danger to life or property, and folks should be getting ready to evacuate. Those who require more time, either disabled or elderly, or if you have a house full of young children and you need extra time to prepare to get out, that would be your time to start getting ready and to get moving. If there's a question whether or not you should go, you should go. And then secondarily, there'll be an evacuation order. Sometimes that's all you'll get from us, but that says you need to move now, and staying will slow our progress and threaten your life or the lives of your loved ones. On the right-hand side, that map's a little tricky to see. You can find it in our website under our emergency operations plan as part of the annex. But essentially, this map you look at uses our local roadways to our collectors and then ultimately to our materials, either going north, south, east or west, depending on where in the community you are and where the issue is that we are addressing. However, those of you who know this area well, know that if the issue's in town, if you get out to the county area, you have many places to go to meander north or meander south into San Joaquin County, even up to Amador County, wherever you need to be to get a full circle around. Some of us had to do that in some of the floods that we've had in years past because many of the roadways were blocked. So that is a map that folks can refer to. There is a QR code if you want to take a moment to screenshot that. And again, it is on our website.
Thank you, Chief Kalanowski. The last slide, I believe, is what can we do? What, how can we partner? And the reality is, this is for wildfires because that was a hot topic in January, but, but it can be done for pretty much any, any type of a disaster, whether it be a flood as the chief mentioned, and we get hit by those in the winter time. Could be an earthquake, it could be a hazardous, hazardous material spill or anything else that's going to affect people where they need to move. It's important for them to be ready, be fire ready for sure. That is one of our greatest hazards that we have here in Sacramento County, but here within the city of Galt, especially in the rural areas where there's more grass. Prepare yourself in your home for a potential of a fire. Ensure that you have smoke detectors on every floor and outside of the sleeping areas. Create a fire escape plan, including a meeting place away from your home. That's the one thing a lot of people will have their family, when you ask your family, where would we meet if we had an emergency where we had no phone service? Where's the one area where we're all going to come together and, and have a secondary in case you can't get to that first one? Assemble an emergency go bag. And as I mentioned earlier, it's in 72 hours worth of, you know, some water and some food, canned foods, a can opener, of course, and a few medical supply medication list, because if you have to go to hospital, you have to know how many milligrams you must take, et cetera. Important documents readily available to, know two ways out of your neighborhood. And it's so important to have at least two ways out or more. I was speaking to a gentleman earlier before this meeting, and you know, the importance of getting out of the neighborhood, not having closed streets is very important to us. We do understand people drive fast sometimes, but we need people to be able to evacuate out and we need to be able to come in. Create defensible space around your home or business, at least 30 feet away from your home if possible, nice and clean with green vegetation and nothing dry. If you live out in the county areas or more in the country, 100 feet if you can. And then remove any rubbish, firewood, stack it away from your home, trim vegetation away from the home, partner with us so it's easier for us to help you. And then the last slide is to register your phones. I understand about 78% of people now don't have a landline. That's one of the latest numbers that I understand. And that means that in order for us to contact you through the county or through us locally, Sacramento Alert is our number that we would, our, our website, our program that we use. That's the website there, sacramentoalert.org. Register your cell phones. And that allows us to send a quick message to you either from the county or from us that there's an emergency, severe weather, some instructions. We can send a direct message to you. There's no charge for any of that. And you get missing persons, notifications, et cetera, and any evacuations that must take place. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you may have. That's the conclusion of my presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Rodriguez, and thank you, Chief Kalanowski, for joining in on that. Very good information. I wrote down a few questions and then I can see if, of course, if her council has questions as well. The information you just provided about the, the emergency readiness, talking about, you know, what things families should be talking about, that information, is that available online somewhere, like on CSD's website or somewhere? We do. We have a, like a disaster preparedness webpage within our website. They can just Google like CSD and then find the website that way and then? Going to write into disaster preparedness section. Disaster preparedness section. Any of that, any of, and normally all cities or within the county, if you just type emergency preparedness. Okay. You know, go bags, go kits, it'll give you all the information you need. It's the standard information that we receive from, from FEMA all the way down to the local level. These are pretty standard recommendations on what to do. Okay. And my next question is, you're fairly familiar with Galt. You and I have driven around Galt in the past, a couple of years ago, and what would you, was there any area that of concern that you think, if any? I know you said Galt's fairly flat and we have good water supply and all of that, but if you had to say there was one area that would be something that would be of any concern, not that it's of concern right now that it needs to be addressed, but if any area had a potential, is there anything that comes to mind? Any of the more rural areas or anything near a waterway? Because when it's winter time, everything is green. When it's summer, it dries up and because it's green during the winter, it allows that grass to grow. And that's where the potential is, especially during the July timeframe where we have the majority of our fires. Those would be the larger potential areas where we would ask people to clear vegetation away from their homes, have them clean, nice and clean and partner with us so that we can extinguish those fires quickly. So one area that comes to mind with that being said is the Dry Creek area. Obviously, you know, the border between us and San Joaquin County. I know you're very familiar with that area. You guys did a water rescue there not too long ago, but that area, I have a lot of people that come to me, you know, in the summer, different times, they're always concerned about the area. What happens if there's a fire that breaks out down there? I mean, it's green now, but in the summer, it gets very dry. It's no secret that we have some homeless activity in that area, which could very well be fire. I mean, I've driven across that bridge at times and smelled campfires, you know, at night when it's cold maybe. I know that that area butts right up against the creekside development, which is interesting that there's only one way out of that particular neighborhood. So I'm thinking potential disaster where those people are trying to evacuate, there's only one way out onto Lincoln Way there.
only one way out onto Lincoln Way there. I know that there's private property that's owned behind those, and they come out and they do mow it down. I know Councilman Vanderberg's property butted up against that, and he had brought this up in the past. When he was here, he had brought that up. Is that an area that CSD, I saw you do inspections, is that an area that you guys look at frequently or aware of? Do you guys work with Code Enforcement Department of the City to kind of keep an eye on that area, that make sure it's cut or mowed, or I don't know? What can you tell me?
Yeah, of course, we have a partnership and a great collaborative relationship with Code Enforcement and the city of Galt itself. We have our inspectors that do go out throughout the entire jurisdiction, including here within the city of Galt. Any area, any parcels that show to have high weeds, high grass, we send them a letter, we give them time while it's still green, and we come back out to conduct the an inspection, a reinspection of those areas to make sure it was done. If they're not done, they're on the non-compliance list, and then we have a contractor do it for them, and we'll charge them or lien the property to make sure that there's no potential for a large wildfire-type spread in those areas. So Dry Creek and some of those other areas, we want to make sure those are nice and trimmed and away from the homes, because fires will start. But as long as they don't get into the homes, the fires can, we'll skirt them around the homes, and we have enough resources to come in and extinguish the fires. We do it every single year. We have over six hundred fires in our, that we respond to every year. Many of those are vegetation-type fires, and those will start kicking off here in the May, June, all the way through October. I mean, wildfire season seems to be year-round now, but fortunately, we had some rain. But those are areas of concern that we want to make sure people keep them nice and clean and defensible space around their homes.
So maybe, Chris, maybe this is a question for you. I know that the one area to the back of the Creekside, so east of Creekside, is owned by the developer who's currently doing some stuff out there, so we know that. But what about the property that's like behind, like Chisholm Trail, that street, you know, the properties that back up to the south on Chisholm, you know, that area there where there's like the bike path and stuff? I don't know who's who's actually responsible for that area? Is that the city? Is that privately owned? Do you know?
Good evening, Mayor. Thanks for the question. I'm fairly certain we are the property owner of the rec area behind the homes. Some of the creeks there are in some sort of preserve, and I'm not sure which ones there at the moment. I can find out for you.
So I asked just because if it's private property, it's easy. You guys inspect, you say, hey, it needs to be abated, we notice it, get the grass cut or whatever. But if it's an area that would like belongs to, you know, the, I forget the name, like the agency that really owns the creek itself, right? If it's them, or I feel like there's this gray area with certain properties, why, who is responsible for keeping that cut down? Is it us? Is it Public Works, or is it who?
So, yeah, it'll depend on ownership, obviously. If it is us, it is our responsibility. I don't know if Public Works Director Griffin can help. If we have ownership of any of Dry Creek, I know Dead Man's Gulch, you know, we do take responsibility. Dry Creek, I am aware there are sections of it that are in preserve, not the HCP. I don't know if that's what you're thinking. It's in HCP. I just don't recall off the top of my head without.
Well, maybe if you could just look into it. I just, being proactive, summers come in, if we could, and I'm not saying that it's been, I don't recall driving by there and seeing, but I know about two years ago, I did meet with a family that lived on Chisholm, and they brought me into the backyard, and they were concerned because the grass was extremely tall back in that. So, but anyways, that's all the questions I have. Council, you have any questions for Chief Rodriguez? Just jump in if you do.
On, I think it's Slide Eighteen, your water purveyors. I'm just curious as to the different colorations specifically for the city of Galt. I see the city of Galt proper is blue, and then there's some pink around them. So is that, do we, we don't have water going up there, do we?
Galt Irrigation District as well is in the pink area. The main part for the city itself is in the, within the city limits, they're in like the light, light blue.
Because I know that there is a very, very random fire hydrant out there on Twin Cities, right on the, there's a turn right before you get over to Rancho Seco to turn in, and there's like this random, just sitting in the middle of nowhere. So I often wondered where that water was coming from, but, I mean, obviously not us, but anyway. So, yeah, I was, I was curious about that. My other curiosity is, obviously, we have this rail rail line running through Galt, and oftentimes, that grass gets, on their property, gets out of control, especially behind places that people aren't at. Do you have a working relationship with the railroad? Are they, like, one of the calls or the regular letter-getters to get out there and, yeah, because I know, like, even behind the, right along Cost, or right behind the cemetery along Cost, and then going south, there's a lot of high grass.
If we find any high grass areas or areas of concern, especially anything near a property, just want to confirm that if you have a rural parcel and there is, there are no homes anywhere near it, the only requirement is the one hundred feet to a rural, to a to a structure, thirty feet in a city limit area. But if you're out in the middle of nowhere, or it's away from anything, then technically, it's, there's no real requirement to trim that down. We still ask people to keep it down, but it's hard to mow down hundreds and hundreds of acres, especially if there are no homes near it. So we have to use a little bit of that discretion as well. But we do have a partnership and a working relationship with the railroad. If we have any areas of concern, they would also be asked to trim them down. They do a pretty good job of keeping their their ease, their right-of-way and their easements down, because they don't want any issues with the train, to shut the train down. So that would be something that we would do if we had to. But also, just to clarify that, especially around Dry Creek or any of those areas, the parts that are especially if they're near the waterway, or if they're owned by the state or Fish and Wildlife or anything like that, there are certain protected lands that we can't touch regardless. And also, you're not allowed to build a home within a hundred feet of those anyway. So you're within the legal requirements. So in the state of California, it's a hundred feet or thirty feet around more of a urban area.
Gotcha. Well, that's all I have, but I wanted to thank you for this presentation. It's very, it's very good to hear from CSD since you're not in the spotlight all the time here. I know in Elk Grove, there's more of you. Of course, there's more of Elk Grove as well, but it's so, it's great to see you down here. And I can say, just from the interactions that I've had for staff down here in Galt, that they've just been tremendous. And I always hear good feedback from, about the staff and different encounters that citizens have had. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And we appreciate, if there's any other council members that might have comment, but big thank you to all of our staff. We have thirty members who are permanently assigned here to serve this community every single day throughout the year. And I know many of them actually even live here. Matter of fact, one of your residents is our Battalion Chief, Chief Shamber, who's here today, they're in the back room. And then we have our Director, Rich Lozano, who's also here supporting and who are present. And that's probably one of the bigger words to use, that they are actually here, and they're committed. And my eyes and my ears, I can't be everywhere as the fire chief, but with Chief Shamber here on the Public Safety Committee, I know that Councilmember Reed's been a big part of that for many, many years. We love the partnership. Those who haven't had the opportunity to meet, love to have coffee with you sometime. But I know that Mayor Farmer and I have had, you know, coffee at his coffee shop and just driven around town and looked at things, but we really appreciate that partnership.
Any other questions, Council?
I don't have no question, but thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation and the detail. Thank you.
I would like to just add one thing, just because there's so many public listening, that about a year and a half ago, I had a family come out from Idaho, and I have a family member who's a, who's a, I forget his rank, but he's pretty well up in Boise Fire Department. And we took him over to Station Forty-Five, let him meet some of the firemen there, and they weren't, they weren't there, they weren't on the call. And they started talking fire, you know, and kind of geeking out on showing each other fire equipment and stuff. And what I took away from that, I was very impressed with the fact that when we left there, that Kyle, my family member, was telling me, he's like, you know, we don't even have that in Boise. Like, we've been wanting to get one of those, or this or that, whatever. So I was kind of shocked that somebody like, well, we have that in Galt, you don't have that in Boise. So it's kind of interesting. But anyways, just want to share that for the public. So it seems like we're well-equipped here. So thank you for the presentation. I do appreciate it. It's always interesting. If we don't have any further, do I have to ask for public comment on the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be sure. If there is anybody who has public comment on the presentation, you're more than happy to bring a speaker card up to the clerk if you'd like to ask questions. If not, then thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Kalanowski, again, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much. All right. So I know a lot of you, or some of you, may be here for the general public comment, so just letting you know, we have one more presentation, and then we'll be going on to public comment, which will be right after that. So if you're wondering how long it'll be before you have a chance to speak, that's when that'll be. So our second presentation this evening is going to be the Measure R Oversight Committee Fiscal Report for two thousand and twenty-three to twenty-four. Chief Kalanowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would ask our Chair of the Measure R Subcommittee, Mr. Paul Harvey, to come up and give his presentation to you this evening.
Thank you, council members, staff, members of the public. I'm Paul Harvey, Chairman of the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee. And on behalf of the volunteer committee members, Mooney, Bull, Gutierrez, and Nelson, I am pleased to present the annual report for the fiscal year June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, which I believe you all have a copy of. The committee's role is to review the expenditures from Major R's revenues to ensure that the use of these taxpayers' funds comply with their intended purpose. We meet quarterly to review this information. Measure R is a November two thousand and eight voter-approved half-cent sales tax increase to fund public safety services within the city. The special use tax is intended for improving safety services specifically related to anti-gang, anti-drug, and public safety services. Ordinance two thousand and eight dash oh four provides program guidelines for Measure R, including directing the city to provide, provide an independent audit by a certified public accounting firm. This audit is not a task the committee undertakes, and we rely on the Galt Police Department, the Galt Finance Department, and the independence of the CPA firm to ensure the city is presenting fairly its revenue and expenses within the financial statements related to Measure R. The audited audited financial statements are included in this report, and a clean report was issued. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Measure R Accountability Report was reviewed and approved by our committee on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. For this past fiscal year, the reported revenue was two million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Revenue was slightly higher than expected due to higher interest, investment interest rates, and also the school district's share of the student resource officer position, which was seventy-two thousand dollars. This past fiscal year, expenditures were reported as two million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, and were twenty percent below plan, primarily due to personnel cost savings and capital equipment procurement not yet completed. The fund balance decreased during the year by two hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, resulting in an ending carryover balance of one million, seven hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. The balance decrease was a result of planned deficit spending, and the current plan is to reduce the fund balance as needs dictate. Committee members were able to meet each quarter as required, and we confirm that proper stewardship was maintained over these funds in accordance with the Measure R sales tax ordinance. I would like to thank our police chief and his staff, as well as the Galt Finance Department for providing us the financial data to review. Also, thanks to the Galt City Council for giving me the opportunity to present this this information on behalf of the Measure R Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Appreciate that. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Harvey? As he stated, we do have that report in our agenda packet, and it is good to hear that that is trending, you know, better than what we expected as far as the the revenue. And I know that's partly because of Mr. Farrell's spectacular investment skills. But no, but seriously, though, you know, Measure R has been a huge asset. We all know that to the to the city of Galt, we wouldn't have a lot of the things that our our police department has without without that money. So it's been very well spent, very well, was well-needed, well-spent, and it continues to be an asset, and we're going to continue to hopefully see it grow and do great things. So if there's no questions, anybody have a public comment about such a presentation, you're more than welcome to bring a speaker card up. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Harvey. Appreciate that. Have a good evening. All right. With that, we'll be moving on to item H, which will be general public comment. Tina, if you'd like to read her statement, please.
Under Government Code Section five four nine, five four point three, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. First, we have Sonia Kimball.
And I would like to state, as Ms. Kimball walks up, just how the public comment works with this type of thing. Public comment is for us to hear the public comment. We're really not allowed to have a dialogue with you or or do anything. So if you make your comment, and we seem like we don't really say anything, it's not because we don't take that in. We're allowed to give direction to the city manager on such things or ask brief responses. But other than that, we hear your comments, and then we'll take that into consideration. So Ms. Kimball, if you'd like to come up? Yes, just right there at the microphone. You can tilt it down if need be.
Well, thank you for listening to me. I've never been to a meeting or spoken. So I relocated here three years from the Sierras, and I live on Pringle Avenue. You have a senior mobile home park here and another senior mobile home park there on the other side. I walk daily with my dogs, and I have been almost hit numerous times on that road, because you've got people that park on both sides. There is no sidewalk, and I have to walk out in the flow of traffic. So I'm either asking, we put a sidewalk in on one side for safety reasons, you've got people in scooters, walkers, and you've got dog walkers, or put a no parking on one side of the road. And I guess that's it. I worry about myself and my dogs and everybody else. Thank you.
Just to be clear, you're referring to the Pringle Avenue between Lincoln Way and Industrial Drive, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. This is, first time I've been to any of the meetings. I've been here like twenty-five years. And I'm just speaking to address the closure or non-closure of Adair Avenue, Adair Way and Stockton Boulevard. When I first moved here, that was one of the selling points that that would be closed, Adair and Stockton Boulevard. And since I've been here the twenty-five years, I had noticed increased traffic, maybe due to growth and maybe the Tesla parking or Tesla charging stations. I kind of find it sometimes difficult to come out of my driveway due to traffic sometimes. Maybe a couple of months ago, leaving my residence around seven, going towards Stockton Boulevard. I was going like towards Stockton Boulevard, heading northbound. And fortunately, I didn't pull all the way to the stop sign, because I was fiddling with my, I guess, my mirror, and someone just came in from the going southbound onto Adair, and they just kind of cut that corner real sharp. Had I been at the stop sign, my front end would have been totally wrecked, and the guy would have knocked off maybe the left side of my car. And he kept going, I blew the horn, and I kind of have a video of it from my dash cam. I didn't bring it, but I can supply it if needed. I didn't bring it, but I can supply it if needed. So that was my concern. It was stated or promised that that end would be closed, but, you know, I don't know what happened. So that's my comment on that.
All right. Thank you for your comment, sir.
Manuel Ayala?
Good afternoon. This is addressing the closure of Adair Way. And I reside at 659 Adair Way, which is located at the very end of the street. I've lived here since 2014, so it's going to be 11 years. And I've witnessed firsthand the developments and challenges that have impacted this area. I'm writing to formally address several ongoing issues that have raised significant concerns for me and my family, as well as the safety and well-being of our community. While I am the son of the homeowner, I share these concerns with my parents and all the residents on the street. One of the primary issues is the excessive uses of Adair Way as a shortcut by an increasing number of vehicles. This has led to potential safety concerns as many unknown individuals can see into our property from the street and the nearby freeway. Unfortunately, I've had items stolen from my front yard multiple times, and in one instance, I was completely robbed. The visibility of my property and the volume of traffic exacerbate these security concerns. Additionally, drivers on Adair Way consistently exceed the speed limits of 25 miles per hour, which is designated for residential streets. These issues extends to Stockton Boulevard, which intersects with Adair Way. The speeding vehicles pose a severe danger, especially given the ever-increasing traffic on weekends and throughout the year. Additionally, the congestion on the street means I have to be extremely cautious when backing out, like the previous person that has presented. Speeding vehicles have created dangerous situations on many occasions. My biggest concern is the risk of a high-speed vehicle failing to make a full turn at the end of Adair Way, coming from Stockton Boulevard, potentially crashing into my house. Even worse, one of my five brothers could be outside in the front yard when such an incident occurs. Another major reason for the congestion is that Adair Way serves as the nearest exit for many people accessing the freeway. With new houses being built nearby, the traffic on this street is only expected to get worse. Over the years, since I moved here in 2014, I've observed the traffic and all the events that happen on the street. The issues are only escalating the action, and action is needed to ensure the safety and quality of life for residents of Adair Way. Given these issues, my family and I believe that closing the street connection between Adair Way and Stockton Boulevard to create a cul-de-sac would significantly enhance safety and reduce through traffic. This measure would help protect our neighborhood from the speeding and congestion caused by vehicles, using the street as a shortcut to destinations like Walmart and the new Tesla charging station. I urge the city of Galt to address these concerns promptly by considering the proposed solution or implementing alternative measures to mitigate the risk to our community. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I look forward to your response and to seeing steps taken to address these serious issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rodney Pratton?
Yeah, my name's Rod Pratton. I live on 707 Adair Way, and it's going to be like the repeat of everything I've been saying for the last year or so. But anyway, the best thing to do for the neighborhood is to close the road. Okay? With all the tickets and all the accidents that have been proven, sooner or later, someone's ended up getting hurt, getting killed. So it'd just be better off if we shut it, we put a roundabout and put speed bumps towards the school. Okay? I just talked to the fire chief. He said he'd be open-minded to talk to you guys about it and everything. So I think he's halfway decent what I got out of him. So anyway, if you guys can talk to him, come up with some kind of solution, is what I'm talking about. We just need some help over there to keep the traffic out. Ever since Walmarts came through, it's been nothing but an interstate coming through there, and it's getting worse. Every day, it gets worse. When you're getting 2,000 cars coming down into your neighborhood, no one wants to see 2,000 cars in their neighborhood, no matter who you are. It's a residential area. So anyway, it'd be just the safest thing to do is shut. There's a bunch of kids that live on that corner. There's like five little kids live there, and five little kids live on that corner. And it's real dangerous, and they can't even come outside and even play or anything. They're always kept inside so they won't end up getting hurt. It's a, believe it or not, it's a very dangerous road. So it just needs to be closed. And like I said, I think the fire chief is pretty open-minded of what's going on because I talked to him a little bit and everything. And before I even started this mess, I went in to talk to the police chief, and I could never, ever get to talk to him. Okay? I always got pushed off to someone else. I think the chief of police should have a little bit of open mind when people come in and go to and see what the issues are. And that's what I need. I know he's not Doug Matthews, because that's what I used to do when Doug Matthews was there, is just walk in the office and we solve the problem. So anyway, I know we got to go in a roundabout way of doing things, but anyway, the whole situation over there is dangerous. And I don't know if you guys remember, a little girl off of Ayers got, ended up getting hit by a car. Okay? This is what I'm trying to prevent, someone getting hurt or someone getting killed before it's too late. So basically, that's all I got to say, and thank you guys for communicating with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comment, Tina?
Alice Lee?
Good evening. I'm here today to, because I'm a homeowner living on Adair Way, and I'm here to present a formal grievance about the speed of an increase in automobile traffic on Adair Way, and to request that the entrance to Adair Way from Stockton Boulevard be permanently closed and a roundabout be built at the corner of Fermoy and Adair Way to address the ever-increasing risk of personal injury accidents. And with respect to some of the earlier comments, even with the closing of Adair Way, I believe there would be multiple access roads into the neighborhood. Car speeds down Adair Way both ways despite a stop sign at the corner of Fermoy Way and Adair Way, or, sorry, cars speed down Adair despite the stop sign. As just one example, the other week while walking our dog, a car sped at freeway miles down Adair at night, barely slowing down at the corner of Fermoy and Adair. And again, that's despite there being a stop sign there. Since Walmart opened in our neighborhood, people driving northbound down Stockton Boulevard are taking a right on Adair Way to get to Walmart instead of taking a right on Twin Cities Road, increasing traffic tremendously. These drivers are not slowing down and abiding by speed limits to get there. Adair Way was not intended as a major thoroughway to get to a superstore like Walmart. Adair Way at Stockton Boulevard was intended by the builders to be closed, off as a court, and to provide a safe neighborhood for residents. Residents were expected to use Fermoy Way as access to and from Twin Cities Road. Most of the residents on Adair Way are elderly or families with elementary school children. The amount and speed of traffic poses a substantial and significant risk to all residents, particularly the elderly who walk across the street to pick up mail and do children walking or riding their bikes to and from Lake Canyon Elementary School, or playing, or just playing outside after school and on the weekends. Residents living near Emerald Vista Drive could easily use Wallin Avenue instead of Adair Way to get to and from their homes. In addition, with the new housing development in a 50, about, I'm guessing, I think it was 50 homes to be built on Fermoy Way south of Adair Way, the increase in traffic would potentially be 100-plus cars, increasing the risk even more significantly to residents that live on Adair Way. Finally, in the last several years, the level of thefts from properties on Adair Way, ranging from car parts being stolen at night to other property, is greatly concerning. Some days ago, late at night, around 11 o'clock, I heard someone open my front door, glass, my front glass screen door. Fortunately, I had my door locked. My children, who I had contacted immediately afterwards, let me know that they were nowhere near the house at the time. This also occurred to a neighbor across the street. Closing off access to Adair Way from Stockton Boulevard could reduce these risks, to all of these risks. And I just want to add that I moved into my house on Adair Way three, about three and a half years ago, and since then, the traffic has significantly increased. It's honestly startling. I purchased that home because I thought it was a quiet street to live with my children, but it's nothing like that right now. And similar to what the other person said, the other gentleman, backing out of my driveway to get to work or just to go to the grocery store is outrageous. It's like, I have to wait for all, you would think that I would have the right of it because I live there, but no, it's just, it's really outrageous. So I'm, I'm just, would hope that you would give this serious consideration, first and foremost, for the safety of the residents in Galt on that street particularly, but also just for the increasing risk that it's going to be causing if that, if that closure is not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Rich Lozano?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, city staff, Ms. Johnson, and the public. I appreciate the opportunity to chat with you today. I'm a citizen of the city of Galt. I'm here to, as the Galt Sunrise Rotary Club President, we're having a fundraiser on April 26th. It's a, it's called the Taco de Mayo fundraiser, so it's taco dinner, family-friendly event. And the information is on the city's community calendar with a QR code if you'd like to purchase tickets also. I also have tickets tonight if you'd like to purchase them tonight with me. Just a little bit about Rotary and what we're doing locally. As many people know, Rotary is an international service organization that provides service throughout the community here, as well as throughout the world. Polio is known for the eradication of polio, and we continue that effort internationally and do what we can locally here to support that. In terms of the local support our club provides, we have, we do the community dinner every year, which is just after Thanksgiving but before Christmas, where we invite the entire community. It's not limited to those that are needy. It's for everyone in the community to come, and this is our, I think, our 15th year doing it. And through COVID, we did it through a box giveaway with the Sunshine Food Pantry in partnership with them. And I appreciate the city's ongoing support of that community dinner and cosponsorship of that dinner, because that's a, it's a big one for us. We also provide individual and group sponsorships throughout the year to local athletic organizations, Boy Scouts, Sea Scouts, booster clubs, and the like, to assist with whatever their needs are and their shortfalls for resources and/or funding. We provide inter-club partnerships. Our last one that is of note is the partnership with the Kiwanis Club here, where we helped with their grand opening of the dog park, and I want to thank the city for the assistance with that and the rebuilding of both the dog parks. And so we try to partner with other community organizations that have similar interests, and so we're going to continue to do that. Rotary locally has also a scholarship that we provide every year to high school seniors. And so if you know any seniors that are interested, the information is at their high schools. And then we also traditionally have a speech contest that we do every year that we provide cash rewards for, and the winners of our local speech contest move on to the district contest. And then just one last thing, I won't take up too much more of your time, but we just had our district conference, and our district, we're the north part of our district, and so it goes all the way down to Tracy, sorry, not Tracy, all the way down to Turlock, out to the Amador County, so all the Rotary Clubs in there in that area. It's about 58 clubs. We partnered with two other districts this last weekend and went to, or two weekends ago, I guess, went to do a service project as a district conference down in Ensenada, Mexico, and we partnered with their clubs in Ensenada, fed the hungry. And then we also refurbished a park, painted curbs, did all that stuff, and then lastly, a beach cleanup. And so there were about 300 Rotarians that ascended on the port of Ensenada and partnered with those other clubs in that city. And so those are some of the things we do, both internationally and locally. So all the proceeds from this fundraiser go to our, this particular fundraiser go to our local community and doing what we can to help support that. It's an annual event, and it's always usually right before May 5th. So if you'd like tickets, you guys have my cell phone number or email or see me after the meeting if I'm here still, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano.
Alicia Kafka?
Good evening. Looks like you brought help.
Yes, hello.
You can move the microphone if you need to. You can pull it down.
Okay. Thank you. So my name is Alicia Kafka. I live at the corner of Adair Way. I'm here to talk about closing the roads. So although it is a struggle for me to be here tonight, it's even more of a struggle for me to fight traffic, to even be able to get in my car in the morning. I'm here to hope that you guys care as much as me and my family would appreciate something happening. I mean, I bought the house almost three years ago, and traffic has definitely become a challenge, just getting into my car, backing out of the driveway, we get honked at. You know, also, there is a elementary school on the corner of Adair Way. Big trucks are flying through there, electric vehicles, you can't even hear them, are coming around the corner really fast. I've noticed the change over the past few months. There's been at least five car accidents where glass and car parts have flown onto my front yard. I am honestly scared to come outside with my children as, you know, just as a parent in general, bringing all these little babies out, it's hard to even just get them in the car without my heart feeling like it's jumping out of my chest because there's cars flying and you don't know, you know, whether or not they're going to come fly on your front lawn like the car did, you know, just a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just asking that if you guys can do something to change that, whether it's closing for oncoming traffic, putting some kind of barriers to prevent them to be able to speed like that, because they're coming from a, like a 55 mile an hour zone to a residential. And, you know, honestly, we really are scared to just even come outside our front doors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
No more public comment.
Okay, that's the end of the public comment period. So we have a, we have a, we have a time at the end of the meeting where we're able to request future agenda items or discussions can be brought back to the council and give direction to city manager and on such things. I will be bringing something up regarding this Adair, so I'm just saying that, so if those of you that are here would like to stick around for that time period, you're welcome to do so. We can't do that right now. It's not too long of a meeting, so it shouldn't be hopefully too long, but if you'd like to. So we appreciate the comments that have been made tonight on this subject.
Mayor, I can add, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think we were directed-
Mayor, I can add, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think we were directed at some point to bring this back in the past, and it was at the Public Safety Committee, so we are looking to bring this back to council some, at some point in the near future.
Okay. Well, could we do that sooner than later? I know there was a traffic study done, but...
I think we currently have it on the May 20th agenda.
Okay. So for those who heard that, we have, this item will be an official agenda item for discussion on the May 20th council meeting. Yeah. Okay, yeah. So anyways, hopefully that'll be helpful to you. You're still welcome to stick around to the end, but thank you, Mr. City Manager, appreciate that information.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. Without, no further public comment, we will be moving on to item I, with reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Pratton.
All right, yes, I attended the Sacramento Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO. It's a monthly commission. This was April 2nd, so it was the day after our last meeting where we had lots of folks speaking here, and it was nothing. We had, we had an item on the agenda here that brought 50 folks to the microphone, so it was a long night.
At your LAFCO meeting?
At the LAFCO meeting. It's just not normal for LAFCO meetings.
What was it about?
But South Airport Project, so there's an area that's, it's, it's near the commercial, well, if you're going to, to the airport, and you look to the right just before you get to the airport, they've just developed all that. This piece is actually across the freeway, and they're asking to bring it into Sacramento City, city limits. So, so it's a hot button on both sides, and lots of speakers, and we did not make a decision on it. If anybody's interested in finding out more about it, I'm available, give me a call, sit down, we'll discuss it, but, but yeah, it was a long night. It was the only one that I attended, it's the last meeting.
All right. Thank you for that report. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Council member Reed.
Good evening, everyone. Since the last meeting, I got to attend the Consumers Groundwater Authority meeting, which the city of Galt was asked to do a presentation on water usage, and Director Griffin did an amazing job summarizing our historic groundwater use, estimating the future groundwater use with all the, with all the construction. And the one thing I wanted to point out that, that he brought up was, our groundwater, the amount of water that we pump out of the ground, being the city of Galt, between the years 1999 and 2014 averaged 5,344 acre feet per year. Between 2015 and 2024, we dropped that by over 900 acre feet. So we went down to an average of 4,443 acre feet per year conserving water, which I had to do the math because I don't know acre feet, but that translates into 200, just over 293 million gallons a year, which we conserved in that compared to the first 15 years. So that was, that was impressive to me, but they had a lot of questions about where our water went after it comes out of the wastewater treatment plant, and so we had a lot of discussions about that, and we're going to give another presentation on, at the next meeting, basically expanding on what we talked about at this meeting. And that's it.
Thank you for sharing that, it's very interesting. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I attended the Policy and Innovation Committee for SECOG, and we did a lot of housekeeping again on that, but we did approve to move to the full board, the operations budget, and some other budgetary items, including grant, we authorized the loan to CARDA, the Capital Area Regional Tolling Agency, or Authority. So that was the bulk of it, but we did hear from the lobbyists, they report in regularly, and obviously, we all know that back in DC, things are changing a lot, and, but, there's been some good news with the changes that have happened with the Department of Transportation, the US, the Federal Department of Transportation, there's been a, some people have been asked to leave, and so new people have come, have come on, and they seem to be, they're moving things along, so they have actually opened back up the opportunities for grants again, which that was, we weren't sure that was going to happen, or what that was going to look like. And so, this month, they're opening two agencies, so like SECOG and other agencies, and then in the month of May, it would open up to member, member like us, but I don't know that, how much attention we'll get at the federal level. However, one of the positives over that is, with those grants opening up, is that Highway 99, as we all know, especially down in our area, could be better. And so with these grants opening up, it's, you know, more opportunities for us to possibly see some funding somewhere, I mean, not us, Galt, but 99, to Caltrans, to be able to get some money to help with, you know, other things. With that said, I did have a very long chat with the gentleman who is in charge of SAC RT, and although we're not part of SAC RT, we do connect to it as we move north, and he was filling me in on the, basically this really large transportation hub that will be taking place near where you were talking, by the airport, because SAC RT, the, what is it, the, oh, the train that goes through, Light Rail, you know, there's a big project to get Light Rail out to the airport, but before the airport, there's going to be this really large transportation hub where everyone from SAC RT, all the RTs in the area, including the Bay areas, will, as they come this direction, that will be the hub. So for trains, Light Rail, that train as well, they're going to take some tracks out there, or, because Amtrak is going to be part of this partnership. So it sounds like Sacramento, although for us was already really large, now with opportunity to bring people, to move people in many directions and faster, will just, is gonna grow. And we already know that they're growing population-wise with all that building they're doing, but now people will be able to move and on public transportation, and a lot of people probably will appreciate that, since AD is going to turn into a toll road. So, anyway, so that was, that was our meeting.
All right, thank you for that information. I myself attended the Galt Youth Commission meeting, which was hosted at, over at the CalWays facility, and one of the thanks, thanks to CalWays for allowing us to use their room to host our meeting after hours. Ms. Lisa Klotz, an employee of CalWays, did a great presentation to the youth of our commission, talking about the organics programs and the laws that are in place now with the organics recycling and so on, and it was very informative. We got a really good Q and A with the kids on that, and I would just want to share one takeaway that I thought was kind of fascinating in that, in that dialogue that between the high school kids, the 12 youth commissioners, and, and the adult mentors, and Ms. Klotz, was that although the residents of the city of Galt are required to recycle their organics, and businesses are required, apparently the school districts are not made to do that. They don't have recycle cans, they don't have organics cans at the cafeterias for the high schools. Thought it was kind of interesting, definitely something I'm going to bring up at the next cast meeting, because I just thought it was weird that they're not, you know, doing something at, at the school district level. I think the elementary was doing something, I've been told, elementary does something, but at the high school level, the kids are like, we got one trash can, and everything just goes into that can. So I don't know, but they should have, you know, so the kids were like, we should be leading by example, so, I'm going to pass that on to those people. So that's all I had to share on that meeting, and with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is going to be our information consent calendar. And those items this evening are, number one, receiving file warrants for the period ending April the 3rd, 2025. Item two is the minutes of the special meeting from March 27th of 2025, and the regular meeting of April 1st, 2025. Item three is going to be the treasurer's report for a period ending February of 2025. Item four is going to be the cancellation of the May 6th, 2025 city council meeting due to the cap-to-cap program. Item five is going to be ordinance amending section 9.38.120 relating to insurance requirements for special events. Item six is going to be the military equipment use annual report, and item seven is the approval of a public service easement across lots 947 through 950 within the Liberty Ranch Village Number Nine. Does anybody wish to pull any of the following items? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I don't necessarily need to pull seven, but I do have a couple of questions, and they don't even really have to do with that easement, but with Liberty Ranch project. They're just questions. My first question is, that stop sign, that random stop sign at Sepeta, Sepeta on Marengo, it doesn't turn into or go into the Liberty Ranch project, is that staying, or is that just for construction, during construction?
I believe it will stay after construction's over. We'll look into it.
Confirm.
Okay, because it's just a three-way stop, you can't go in, in, in fact, it goes into a service area or something, is right where it's at. My other question, this is just the development itself, there is that random, I don't know if it's a power pole or a telephone pole in the middle of the street, is that going to be removed?
That will be removed at some point. The SMUDS are requiring that an easement be granted for them to relocate to those, to parcels that are to the east. And until the developer is able to get an easement, they'll be unable to relocate the power pole. They're working on it, they're trying to purchase rights for, from that property owner for an easement, and we're told the next 30 to 60 days they'll get that, the transaction will occur, and then it's on SMUD to get everything relocated.
And that's an easement just between SMUD and the property owners, or will that involve the city at all?
That would be for SMUD, specific for their power pole.
Okay. That's, that's all I have.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Does that easement have to do with these easements that we're talking about in this?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I too would like to know about that stop sign, there's a lot of community chatter about that stop sign, so please get back to us.
I will do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I have a motion on the floor by the vice mayor to move the consent calendar, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Second, so I have a motion by Vice Mayor Sandu, second, and by Councilman Pratton, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Consent calendar is approved, 5-0. Moving on to item K, scheduled matters, matters of notice, matters slash notice of public hearing, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, moving on to item L, regular calendar. First item up this evening is from the treasurer's office. Item one, subject is the treasurer's report for the period ending March 2025. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, audience. Before you tonight, you have the treasurer's report for ending March 2025. Before we get to that and talk about that, we always talk about different economic indicators here, here locally, and I always give you the unemployment rate for, for the city of Galt, and also about housing. So first, from the EDD website, it says that there are 13,000 people that are in the labor force here in the city of Galt, 12,200 are employed, which, if you do the math, then it's 800 who are unemployed. Somehow, they calculate, calculate that out to 6.5%. If you actually do the math, it's actually 6.15%, but it's, that's EDD. Anyway, but countywide, I will say that they, they are saying that the unemployment rate for the Sacramento County is 4.8%, so, which is, which is actually pretty good. Now, on to housing, for the month of March, there were a total of 26 closed house sales in the 95632 area code. And one particular statistic that, that popped out at me was, and I'm just going to talk about median, so the median listing price of the homes that sold were, was $560,000, okay? The actual sales price, or the closed price, was $527,000. So it's, it's a little bit of a difference, where in previous meetings, as you recall, the, the final sales price used to be just like, say, a little bit higher than the actual listing price. So what that means to me is that the, the housing market is, is softening a little bit. So it comes out, that came out to $318 per square foot, and previously, we were up in around 3, about 327 per square foot. So it's just, it's, prices are just barely starting to come down a little bit. Now, of those 26 homes that did sell in the month of March, 24 of them were within 90 days of being listed, okay? 17 of those happened to be within 30 days of being listed. So it's, they are, they are in fact going quick. Prior to the meeting, Councilmember Pratton and I were talking about interest rates, and, and the Federal Reserve is going to be meeting on interest rates in, what's it, May the 20th, and then at the end of, end of June. I mean, everybody has their own crystal ball, mine, mine says, again, my opinion, I don't think they're going to do anything with interest rates on May the 20th, just because the data hasn't shown, you know, with, with inflation, with unemployment, the data just really hasn't shown the need for any interest rate change there, but I absolutely believe that it will change on June 30th, and that rate will be probably, I'm assuming, coming down, okay? So with that, I'll get to the city of Galt report, and overall, I mean, we're, we're doing very well. Overall, the entire portfolio earned a yield of 4.27%. During, during March, I had a, I'll say a pretty large amount in with our local bank, Farmers and Merchants Bank, it was about 18 and a half million dollars. And the reason for that is, 10 million of that is because it's in a money market account that honestly, they're giving us a very high above-market interest rate. So that's, that's, you know, certainly to our advantage. And the, the majority, of course, are, of our investment portfolio are in quasi-government bonds. When I talk about quasi-government bonds, I'm talking about Federal Home Loan Bank, I'm talking about Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, even, was it, was it the Farmers, Farmers Credit Bank? So anyway, that's, that's the quasi-government. At the end of March, so the first nine months through, through March, the city earned a little bit over $3,750,000 in interest. And when the gentleman here, we came up and talked about Measure R, honestly, I was very pleased to hear that he was a little surprised that he, he earned a little bit more in, in interest income than, than was expected. I would only advise, this fiscal year will be probably equally as well, equally good, but don't always expect that, because we know that the interest rates are coming down. I still predict that at the end of this current fiscal year, the city will earn somewhere around 4.3, 4.4 million dollars, just in interest alone. So that's good, and it's the, absolutely the most we will have ever earned. With that, I ask the council to accept the treasurer's report for March 2025, and if you have questions, let me know.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Farrell? No questions about his crystal ball, or anything?
I do.
Yeah.
What concerns should we have as the city council with the city's money, with the recent large fluctuations in the stock market, if we, or if we should have any?
Well, number one, it's, it's against code, government code, that I, as treasurer, cannot invest in the, in the city's money into the stock market. We all know if... We all know if, I would not advise you to look at your 401K these days, okay? Because now it's a 201K, right? Okay, all right. So it, yeah, I mean, the stock market goes up and down. I mean, we all know, we've all experienced that. The bond market does a little bit, but not to the severity that, that the stock market does. And, and we, as a city, we, we purchase just, as I say, the government bonds or quasi-government bonds, and those are more stable than, than the others. And, you know, as, as Treasurer, my first objective and priority is, you know, safety first, and that's certainly, certainly what I look at. As far as, you know, what's going on with the economy and the stock market, honestly, when you, when I'm investing the city's money, I don't look at that. Now, on a personal level, while I'm looking at my 401K, that's a different story.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess that goes with my question. I, I know that the, the stock market doesn't really, you don't look at that, but I know you're not like, you know, buying Bitcoin or anything with the city's money, but I do know that there's been a lot of chatter about the bond market being really crazy, and so I guess your comment a minute ago was that those bonds are different than the kinds of bonds that you're.
Yeah, I mean, they're a little, you know, they're a little bit more stable. I mean, there's, there's a certain range in the past few weeks when the stock market has gone, you know, crazy and the bond market has done. There's a certain range that bonds sell for, and, and what I do, I don't, I don't buy bonds on the secondary market, I only buy new issue bonds. And so, you know, I know exactly, you know, what, what I'm expecting to receive for a certain period of time for a bond, whether it be anywhere between, you know, three months to five years. And I, per, again, per government code, I cannot go beyond five years. And every bond that I buy has a call feature in order, and, and I intentionally do that because we get a little bit higher yield whenever there is a call feature. So, you know, given the example, I could buy a, say, a five-year treasury, let's say it at, I'm just going to make up a number, three and a half percent, but I could buy a quasi-government bond, five-year with a one-year call feature at, say, about four and a quarter. Well, I'm going to take that extra, or you, I'll take that extra seventy-five basis points, hoping that it's not going to get called. And if it does, it does. I mean, that's just the way you look at it. It's just, you know, that's, that's the, you're willing to accept that seventy-five basis points, but knowing that that bond could get called away in, in a year. So that's the, you know, that's the, if there's any risk, that's the risk that I take.
Yeah.
It's a safe risk.
Well, it's all interesting information, you know, I always find your, your information fascinating. This is why I had you as a guest on my podcast.
That's right.
It will be interesting to see how the, as these new developments come online, you know, the first two phases of Liberty Ranch and some of the others that are being built over the next, say, year, eighteen months, it'll be interesting to see how that new supply of houses will affect the, the housing information that you share with us, if it, you know, the more supply drives prices down, or is it, what does it do? So be looking forward to seeing that.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. It, it is interesting to look at those, those housing statistics. You know, who knows? I don't, I just don't think that the price of the homes are going to decrease much more here in Galt. Again, that's, you know, my crystal ball. I just think that's, that's kind of what people need to expect these days if they're going to buy a house here, here.
Quick, quick question. I just triggered something. Those home sales that you referred to.
Yeah.
Did those include the new homes or just resale?
That's a great question, and it does include the new homes.
Okay.
It does.
Yeah, because they're selling some of them, so it has to.
They're just starting to, to sell some, yes.
Well, I'm just wondering what that did to the, how long they've been on the market, you know?
Well, they, they go pretty quick.
Exactly. Well, and, you know, increasing that.
Exactly.
All right, well, if there's no further questions for Mr. Farrell, I would be looking for a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report ending March two thousand and twenty five.
I'll do it. We have an I'll do it by Councilmember Reed.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilmember Pratton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye.
Treasurer Report accepted five to zero. Next item is going to be from the City Manager's Office. Item is number L two, repeal and replace the city of Galt Municipal Code, Chapter eight point zero four regarding fireworks. Mr. Arias. Code Enforcement Supervisor TJ Gadati will provide the presentation.
Good evening, guys. How's everybody doing? My name's TJ Gadati, City of Galt Code Enforcement Supervisor, Code Enforcement Fireworks Code Update. Specific, one of the specific reasons we're doing this is when I looked at discussion is to really define clarity for regulations, requirements, enforcement, penalties, and to really update it. Myself and Mr. Rice were talking today. There's reference to the City of Galt Fire Department. Thank you, BK, appreciate that. So one of the, it's City of Galt, City of Galt Fire Department, we haven't had a city fire department in a while, so one of the things is, is to kind of upgrade this and regulate it. Fireworks generally prohibited, bans of use and sale of all fireworks except as noted below. Sale, transport, use, display, discharge, there's specific dates and times for that, and that's part of the Safe and Sane fireworks, which is regulated through the State Fire Marshal's Office, specifically June twenty eighth, twelve noon, to July fifth at eleven P M. Enforcement citations and fines, this is kind of the big one. This is where we kind of get into more of a partnership with CST Fire and the Galt Police Department this year. We meet consistently with CST Fire on a regular basis, and we cover a lot of topics, and this is one of the topics we're going to be reviewing, but violations, civil violations and fines up, up to a thousand dollars. The biggest addition is the host liability. That's going to be pretty specific to a homeowner, a minor, a guest, anybody on site that is using illegal fireworks. They can be cited on site either through Fire Code and or the Galt Police Department. The city officers also authorized to confiscate, destroy any and all fireworks, including Safe and Sane fireworks, those fireworks, if they are taken from that site, that will be reviewed and, and destroyed by CST Fire. It's just kind of a quick overview, but this is our, kind of our goal this year with our fireworks ordinance to really improve it, increase regulations and increase enforcement action, and really create better partnerships and upgrade our fireworks code and partner with the Galt Police Department and CST Fire. Is there any questions at this time?
So Mayor, Police Chief Kalanowski will add a little bit to that. There's really been a joint effort on updating our fire code, and I believe the chief can add some value to the discussion.
No, I just wanted to tee it up a little differently. Elk Grove Police Department engaged in this process last year and started by using their drone program and other methods to record the activity on the night of Fourth of July, or those dates around the Fourth of July where they were having this issue. And it gives them the ability to go back later and administratively cite through the host ordinance those folks responsible for discharging fireworks, because as you know, we get stripped out pretty quickly with our capacity to respond. But this allows me to use my community service officers and other non-sworn staff, in addition, partnering with code enforcement and when we have CST Fire personnel onboard with us those nights, to use that. And my vision through this process is with that emerging, emerging technology, and I've talked about the drones as first responders component that we're looking at in the future years, that's another piece that we can use to address this issue. So for us, the ability to use emerging technology other than sworn staff and the host ordinance are the three moving pieces for us that take this home.
Questions?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And thank you, TJ. So just to clarify for the public, because I don't want to create more fireworks with this discussion like the fireworks regarding the other ordinance that was discussed last meeting. This is not some, what, what we're doing here, this is regarding illegal fireworks, fireworks that are already deemed illegal in the city, not the fireworks you buy from the fireworks stand and you set off in front of your yard. These are illegal fireworks, looking to strengthen, strengthen the enforcement and the methods used to enforce regarding those illegal uses, correct?
Yes, that is correct. One of the things that, and, and the new ordinance too, is just, as I spoke to Mr. Rice earlier today, is just the partnerships getting more involved, even from, you know, making sure that every fireworks stand is, is licensed properly through, through the state, that every box and every unit being sold has a state fire marshal tag on it, that at any given time, those fireworks stands could be inspected. It could be informal, making sure there's fire extinguishers there, make sure nobody under the age of eighteen is in there selling, just becoming partners with CST Fire and Galt PD throughout this whole process, and really identifying where we can mitigate and reduce risk in our city prior to even Fourth of July and being proactive. One of the, the things that I really like in our host liability is the ability that if the host identifies potential risk before it even happens, that they notify us, we can respond to that area and mitigate that risk. And again, we always talk about compliance. If we can get that location to compliance before something happens, that's a go in that situation too. So that's an added within that host liability section too. So it's, it's really about kind of reducing risk and reducing the impact of illegal fireworks, not legal fireworks.
So one of the things in this that I read that, that comes to mind is that one of the, the teeth in this enforcement is that it holds the property owner accountable, right? So, so I have Fourth of July at my house, you know, I got a buddy that comes over and he's like, you know, he's like, I just got some good stuff out of Ukraine or Tijuana or, you know, right? He's like, watch what this will do. I mean, if I, if you let that happen, I, as the property owner, would be responsible if I had guests that were using illegal fireworks.
Correct, and this goes to what Chief Kalanowski said, the event that happened in Elk Grove last year, I was just in a class and training, and a hundred thousand dollars in fines, the use of the drone program, Elk Grove PD, they were able to identify the location, they saw people walking in and out of the home with the fireworks. They had five pallets worth of fireworks out, out on the street, but they were able to identify homeowner was involved, there was guests involved. They, they were actually able to pinpoint exact, you know, subjects that were involved, from vehicle movement to who was actually lighting the, the fireworks. So you would be responsible. Now, if you called, said, hey, I got somebody getting ready to do something, and PD responded, and let's say CST has a, you know, an investigator out that night, and potentially we could be involved and we're able to mitigate that, then you're helping us become compliant before the issue even happens. In that situation, we're looking more of a compliance approach than an enforcement approach.
So let me give you the hypothetical.
Sure.
I mean, there's a lot of people in the street in the neighborhood, you know, say with one of my guests, he comes without my knowledge, throws something out of the street, you know, it's an M eighty or whatever, right? And then, you know, CSO just, or the, yeah, CSO just happens to be cruising by and see that. I mean, obviously, there has to be some discussion, investigation a little bit before somebody's just going to be slapped with a thousand dollar fine about whether or not the homeowner really knew that happened or was aware or something, right? We're not, I mean, right?
Correct, yeah, there'll be a full investigation. It won't be just, hey, you said you did it, and this is where the expertise of Galt PD and investigation comes, comes to play, and even CST Fire. I'll let BK answer this.
Yeah, we'll be addressing the most egregious violations, and I just want to, to the public and council, this is not going to solve the problem, just puts us on the same platform with Elk Grove. We share a common fire department within the fire district, so the approach is going to be the same. And again, it's the most egregious, a one M eighty is not, you know, what we're responding to, we're, we're addressing pallets or multiple boxes of illegal fireworks that are being launched and going on people's roofs and other things like that, so.
Well, look, as one council member, I could fully support anything we can do. I mean, I had a good friend and family that lost their home on Fourth of July last year, was suspected from illegal firework, actually, two homes, both were burnt. They lost everything they had. It was a retired couple, it was a big tragedy, and, I mean, you know, we're not here trying as the city or the council, trying to cut in on, you know, the right to citizens of Galt celebrating, you know, a patriotic holiday, you know? We just want you to ask that you use the fireworks that are allowed and not be reckless. And, I mean, where I live is like Fallujah at night on the Fourth of July, I can tell you, the stuff that goes off over, it's crazy. So if you guys are using drones and you guys couldn't crack down on that, more power to you, because there's, you know, there's dry fields back there and all kinds of stuff, and all our neighbors are just on pins and needles waiting for a fire that night, so. Anyways, any council members have any comments or questions for Mr. Gadati or?
I do. I, and I appreciate and assumed that you would look into this, the incident, because I am a little concerned about landlords who may not even be in the area, and all of a sudden, their property has fines on it or, or something like that. So, and I don't know how you hold a tenant, can't hold a lien on their house over their head or anything, but my, I, I know I play a lot of what ifs, but do we have any protection for our drones? Because I have a couple of neighbors that I know exactly, if they see that, that drone coming and they have an aerial firework, they'd be like, you know, right after it. So is there extra, you know, laws to protect those drones or to, or not protect, but to?
Well, yeah, yes, and second of all, we have additional layer of liability or insurance through our liability group that protects the asset. So if there was damage to our product in some way, you know, we would get covered through our insurance pool. So, yeah, obviously firing a weapon, you know, at, at the drone, you know, you have the discharge of the weapon in the city limits.
Well, I mean, even just a firework, that's right, because those are all going off around, around.
Yeah, and so, and that's something we need to be careful about when we deploy our equipment, but there's also opportunities on sort of hotspot areas that we can use our non-sworn staff to do video recording and other things that are not sort of known to these individuals when they're occurring, and we can go back and conduct those investigations the next day and make contact with folks and, and figure out what was really going on. Again, it's one tool in the toolbox, and we get hammered every year. I hear it through public safety, I hear it on the street. After last Fourth of July, when I was sitting here, a resident came up and says, you know, essentially, why aren't we doing it like Elk Grove? So, you know, it was time to elevate our game and to make sure that we're consistent in using best business practices, and that's what you have before you.
And the ordinance actually calls for a thousand dollar fine per firework, correct?
And that's where you heard the example in Elk Grove, and that is an over-the-top, egregious, very animated response from the participants below. There's no doubt about who was responsible for that activity, and, and they were successful in that one, but that's just one of many, and they don't get them all.
Well, I think that education-wise, that maybe the city is very proactive in, it's a thousand dollar per firework, and now we have eyes in the air, and we just want you to be safe. I think that's, hopefully, maybe we'll stop one house from.
Agreed.
Going, you know, overboard.
Agreed.
Yeah, and for people that are listening right now, or people maybe watch, the public watch this meeting back, I mean, I mean, the general, the general idea, and maybe Chief Rodriguez can just nod and say yes or no, the general idea is if it, if it goes up in the air, it's, it's not legal, pretty much, right? I don't know of any legal fireworks that actually shoot up in the air that are, right? So if somebody brings over something that shoots in the air, you probably, you know, whatever, or if you had to buy it from Kentucky, or you had to bring it in from your last trip to Tijuana, it's probably not going to be legal either, so those would be good indicators to go by. Vice Mayor, Mr. Pratton, any comments, questions? No?
Yeah, I have a couple clarification to TJ. One thing is, when we replacing, could you move a little bit clarification of what we was doing before and what we changing? Just in a short brief, what we changing?
The, the biggest thing for me is, is the host liability and just creating better partnerships and being more responsive to the front end of kind of the Fourth of July season, from making sure that everything's permitted and that code enforcement is actually going to be involved in the process as the booths go up. And we'll go out there, we spot check, make sure that, you know, it's got the city permits, make sure that, you know, spot check of every unit that's being sold, it has a state fire marshal tag on it. Being more involved with CST Fire, partnering with, with Galt PD, Lieutenant Azavito reached out to me, we're going to have some discussions this week about, you know, proactive approach to Fourth of July coming up, and even working, working with our social media team, Genesis, maybe get some education stuff out there before Fourth of July to really kind of educate our community. This is about illegal fireworks. It's not about the safe and sane having a great time. We want to reduce and mitigate the impact of illegal fireworks and, and, you know, so everybody can enjoy it.
All right, the next thing is the host and minor liability. You know, the A, number A, could you a little bit explain in honor of a private residential and non-residential real estate in the city, what they mean?
So what, you're talking about our hosts and minor liability?
Number eight.
So right here, Paul, I have our host minor liability, the following. So right here, Paul, I have our host minor liability, the following items shall be defined as follows. Host means all following, it means any owner, private residential, non-residential real property in this city, a person who has the right to use, possess, occupy public, private property under a lease permit license rental agreement, a person who hosts, organizes, supervises, officiates, conducts or accepts responsibility for a gathering on a public or private property, minor, under the age of 18. Strict liability, in this section, it means liability for a wrongful act regardless of person's intent, knowledge, neglect, lack thereof of committing a wrongful act. A host shall not permit a violation of this chapter.
Stop there, number, number three, strictly liability.
Strict liability in this section means liability for a wrongful act regardless of person's intent, knowledge, neglect, or lack thereof committing the wrongful act. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, it's, it's essentially, there was a discussion earlier about what's the level of requisite knowledge that somebody needs to be, to be culpable under this ordinance? That is essentially saying you don't need any. You're strictly liable if you are the one that has charge over the premises, whether you own the premises, whether you're an occupant, a land tenant, or you're otherwise hosting a social event on the property, you're responsible. Now, PD's also described that they're going to exercise.
So that means even somebody intend is not intend, how you legally, she might we know that?
Yeah, I mean, essentially, if you are renting a property to a renter, and you are the landlord and the, and the homeowner, and that activity is occurring on your property, ultimately, you, as the property owner, can be responsible for the activity of your tenant. The pathway to solving that problem is ensuring that you get compliance from your tenant, and if you received a fine, you would expect that your tenant, in order for them to continue residency, would pay the fine.
Right, but how you control your tenants, aren't they illegally, if somebody have a two or three properties and they tenant, how you control your tenant?
I think with the vice mayor, you said something that was conflicting in my opinion, you said the organizer of a gathering, but you said the property owners. There's a clear difference between me being the property owner and my renter organizing a gathering, so who's responsible, the organizer of the gathering or me as the property owner?
Both.
Yeah, both.
It's the, the host is one of those three things, depending on the situation that presents itself.
So would it be more likely if PD responded to, let's say, guys shooting off mortgage, right? He shows up, it's more, is it more likely that the person that, that who lives there, who is hosting the party, him gets cited, or are you guys going to try to do your diligence and just forget about that guy and go right to the property owner and cite him?
Well, first and foremost, we would like to identify the actual subject in the illegal activity, but absent that ability to identify that person, if we know you're hosting, or there's a hosted party at that location, it's a lot like the host ordinance with minor parties where alcohol is being served in the community and things like that, similar thought process. The ability is ultimately to use this authority to address the issue through the land owner, the owner of the property, to get compliance from those renters, or, and/or if you own the home, the homeowner.
So my, my, for example, there is a 60 year old apartment, the owner, there might be a 5, 10, whoever doing illegal, I hope not, somebody, then how you actually in a court to legally to find that person as a criminally, is that, I, I, I do understand, I'm agree with that, but we does not want, as my responsibility as a council, I don't want to do something, is come back to the city and have some kind of lawsuit against the city, that's my main concern.
So, yeah, so I would say that after enforcement, there is due process that occurs after the administrative, administrative citation or the citation is issued, where the fine is, where the fine is issued, where it could be mitigated through a reduction in the fine or other manners can be, or other ways it can be addressed. So just, it's like if you got a ticket, you know, a traffic ticket, you know, there is due process that you're available to, to appeal that citation, and so that's what you would do as the land owner. And look, we have to do something that's a little
No, actually, I'm, I'm not protecting myself, I'm just protecting.
No, I understand, no, I'm just giving examples, right? So I'm just saying, if there's a land owner that has
Protect the people doing the business, the people have the house, they rented out the houses in the city, I have to protect both way.
So Paul, this is, this ordinance and the adoption of it is no different than any code that we apply, right? Whether it's a hoarding situation, you have a non-vehicle leaking, ultimately, we will contact the renter and the property owner, but ultimately, the property owner is solely responsible for that activity on that property. Again, due process, mitigation, your fine, hey, we can work the fine out, maybe you were trying to be proactive, there's a lot of kind of tools in the toolbox that we can use, but this, this adoption is no different than any ordinance.
My question is, what we changing? If there is already there, then why we need to change?
Well, we're, we're including the host ordinance is not, is not currently in place. This horde, this host ordinance is the moving piece that changes the dynamics of the municipal code and allows us flexibility to cite where we see it, either the, the party host, or ultimately, the landlord of the property, if it's a renter situation, a homeowner, if it's the homeowner. These are all tools that we have to use, and then ultimately, due process in the citation that's issued occurs on the back end, where people can bring in their story, their evidence, you know, their knowledge, and those will be handled administratively through the city. So, again, what we're doing here in Galt is no different than other communities, and specifically Elk Grove in the same fire district, and I hope that we're playing on the same level of field, so there's that expectation. And the second piece is, and we've heard from the fire chief, fires on or around the 4th of July go up, and we have to be accountable to those potential victims of those fires if those occur. And I feel like if we're not engaging in this business practices as an organization, we have some potential liability there also.
I, I think just to be a intermediary between what the vice mayor is driving, I totally understand where he's going with this, because if you think about it, and, and, but between what he's saying and what you're saying TJ, and what the chief is saying, I think what I would just be looking for, maybe this will make the vice mayor feel more at ease, is that we're just looking for some, some verbal acknowledgement from code enforcement and from the police department, that this type of enforcement, obviously, we're going to go after the perpetrator, right? First and foremost, we're not just going to go after the property owner first, we're going to try to, obviously, we're not just going to fly a drone over and go, we see some illegal fireworks down there, and then we're just going to mail the property owner, once we find out who that is, a citation. We're obviously going to try to find that person who's doing that, cite that person. If we can't find out who it is, then maybe the person who's throwing the party that night, or whatever, so forth. So I think there's a process that you get to before you ultimately end up with sending a citation to the property owner. Now, if that does happen, the property owner will have due process, and he can try to fight that and say, well, look, I wasn't responsible, my tenant, whatever, but I don't think that's the first thing that we're going to see, is the property owners being cited every time. It's more like the perpetrator.
So Mayor Farmer, I'll jump in as, you know, the one responsible ultimately for code enforcement, I will just say, what you had just described is the process we would go through. So, I mean, I, I don't know what other assurance we could give, other than we've always had an approach of trying to work with the folks directly responsible, you know, and the last resort is always to go then to the property owner. And as was explained, there is a due process. So I don't feel like there's going to be this attack on property owners for this process. This is not, not only does Elk Grove have this ordinance, this ordinance is probably being adopted in half the cities in California. Just went through this in my previous city, and I'm aware of others that have adopted it too. So I can assure you that our approach will be to deal with the perpetrators first, which I'm confident we would be successful, and hopefully, property owners, that we don't even have to engage, but if we do, we would, we would do that.
But I, I just want to be clarification on that, my intent is not, I'm not agree with that. Safety is always my intent in the beginning, and I support that. This is the thing, the conversation, I like to be clarification myself and clarification my citizen. All the citizen is the zone, so we want to make sure we clarify with them, that's my dialogues made. Just, just clarify what we doing, so after that, what we implement, yes, we have to implement.
And I think the clarity and the, and the host portion of the ordinance, it does state that, and even part of it is discretion can be used even at the end, like, are we going to write a citation of violation for this? You know, is it an M80? Okay, we're not going to do a $1,000 fine. That might be a warning, just, it's going to be no different than the thousands of cases we've dealt with in the last six, seven years to where we go out, we use discretion, we use our best practices and best judgment, and the goal is to get compliance, and the goal is to move forward so we can continue to create a great city, whether it's this ordinance or any other ordinance we're looking to, you know, to use in our city.
Okay, on, on that host, if you look at E, number two, could you might we explain on that?
A host who initiates contact with law enforcement and fire officials to assist in removing any person from the property or gathering in order to comply, this chapter if the request for assistance is made before the person's contact law enforcement or fire officials to complain, then the violation of this chapter. So that stating right there that we will work with you. If I'm the homeowner and I see a buddy of mine getting ready to do something, and they reach out to law enforcement, to fire, they contact us, we get there before it happens, then we're able to mitigate it and get the place of compliance before we even have to move to an enforcement, compliance component.
So that means if, for example, there is a parties hypothetically, and there is he, for example, they call some guest, and they starting doing the illegal fireworks, and the person who is the owner, whoever, if he called first to the police, I don't know how you can, that time can be identified, that person might be outside, or maybe a couple then, the person can start, before that, how you can differentiate that thing?
I think that's written, that's written to give the host of the party, because that's really what it's talking about there, the ability to ask for assistance to, you know, to address the issue before it occurs or continues. And so when that happens, the host of the party no longer has that liability because they've engaged with the police department to address that issue. So that's where they're compliant, or their attempt to be compliant allows them not to be responsible by having us respond to shut it down.
Okay, thank you. And I do not have any question at this time. Thank you TJ, thank you chief.
Thank you staff for clarifying that.
I just want to, I don't want to belabor, but I want to add one thing because it's been missed in this conversation. When it comes to multifamily residential property, the host will not be strictly liable, because in that situation, you have multiple tenants, it's harder for a property owner to be mindful, you have less direct control of a multifamily residential property situation. And so I just want to make clear, and we carved that out specifically in the ordinance where it says, so, so the idea of strict liability is only going to apply in a situation where it's essentially a single family residence, because the thought is, the landlord has more control over that and charge over that premises. In multifamily setting, we want to see a little bit more of a clear knowledge. So in our ordinance, it specifically says, in the multifamily residential property context, you will not be strictly liable, and you only be liable as a host if you actually hosted, organized, supervised, officiated, conducted, or accepted responsibility for such a gathering. So we're going to require some direct knowledge. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, most of the questions that we're asking are probably related to, going to come up in a multifamily residential setting, and in that context, under this code, we need more than strict liability. So I just want to make that clear.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
All right, well, if we have any.
I just want to say a couple of things. One, I wanted to say that I, you know, I fully support this for a couple of reasons. One, anybody that's known me for a while knows that I've been around EMS, fire, and police my entire life, and 4th of July is one of those days that they get super stressed because of these types of incidents, and it negatively affects the whole entire community. So anything that we can do ahead of time to try to address this like this would be great. I mean, just last, just last 4th of July, I sat watching the fireworks, and I saw that there were houses that were on fire in Sacramento that they didn't have units to send because they had, they were all out doing all of this other stuff. So anything that we can do to help these guys be able to do their jobs on 4th of July is what we should be doing.
Yeah, 100%. Like, look, the message here is, part of this is deterrent. If you're watching this meeting, or if you're watching this and you talk to people and you hear, oh, I got, I heard the, you know, the Galt City Council is going to really start cracking down on legal fireworks, yeah, you didn't read that wrong, that's exactly what we're doing. So you know what, I mean, look, like I said, I had a family lost everything they, they had, and, you know, there's just no place, you know, you want to celebrate, celebrate with, with, with legal fireworks, and if you want to take a gamble and risk, then you're going to, you're going to reap the, reap the repercussions of that, so. Any other comments? Do you have any public comment?
We have public comments.
Okay. Public comment.
Phyllis?
Few things, first of all, thank you for taking this stand. There's only a couple of things I would like to see added. Number one, and I'll give you a perfect example, let's say, a person buys illegal, they have it in their home, they're reselling it to the public, you got the buyer and the seller at large, I'd like to see something about that. And I'll give you a perfect example, as a property owner, what happened to me. I live at 115 Second Street, 113 Second Street, my neighbor was putting off fireworks in my area, I told him to get lost. I'm the property owner, that's a case where I didn't do it, I shouldn't be responsible, so I agree with what was just said, which is perfect, but you got the case of the buyer, the seller, and the property owner, and it has to be on all three levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis. Any other public comment?
No.
All right. All right, well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only, an ordinance repealing or replacing City of Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 8.04, fireworks, to clarify permissions and prohibitions, I said that right, in the city related to fireworks and strengthen fireworks regulation and enforcement in the city. Do I have a motion to move this item?
I'll move as read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pratton, seconded by Councilmember Reed, kind of roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Motion is approved five to zero. Moving on to next item, L3, subject is the amendment in addition to the Galt Municipal Code Title 6, Animals, Chapter 6.04, Animal Care, Custody, and Control Regarding Care for and Keeping of Certain Pigeons.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I am going to just intro this and then turn it over to TJ. No, TJ will explain the code, but I want to just talk about how we got here. We've had in the past, you know, five years or so, issues with the accumulation of racing pigeons in backyards and neighborhoods. There's been a couple instances where we have had complaints, where we have had 100 or so racing pigeons in coops in backyards, and they had created a major nuisance for those living in the nearby homes. The nuisances include noise, dander, smell, and in some cases, bird, dead birds that drop dead after flying their races. So after the first one, I thought that would be an anomaly and wouldn't happen again, but it did. So we are now instituting a code to then regulate them because the state, we have a code that basically says you can't have fowl, you know, in your home, but the state excludes racing pigeons from that definition of fowl. So in order for us to control the issues that I described to you, we needed to provide our own regulation for racing pigeons. So here it is. I hope, I think this one should be a little easier.
Good evening once again, my name is TJ Godati, City of Galt, Code Enforcement Supervisor. A good evening, council. I've learned more about pigeons in the past two months than, I think, in a lifetime. Regulations regarding animals, Chapter 6, I'll just kind of briefly go through this, and I have some notes for you, but code update conditional allows pigeons, training and/or racing pigeons only, training and racing permitted only between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., must have valid registration and membership to an established racing or home Must have valid registration and membership to an established racing or homing pigeon organization. There's numerous organizations, I've found that out within the state and national. No more than 10 pigeons on a property, I've done some research, there's cities that have anywhere from, you know, 10 to 50. A lot of it has to do with lot size. Coops must be 50 feet from property line. Again, this has to do with lot size. Some of the homes that we've dealt with, homes specifically that we're looking at, the lot size is about 7,000 square feet. So we're, we will work with you for compliance, but we have to make sure that your activity's not gonna impact your neighbor. Coops must be kept sanitary at all times. Within our code, we have the ability to take a look at, you know, any veterinary updates to make sure that the coop is being cleaned and that you're, you know, taking care of the pigeons throughout this process. The proposed ordinance makes the following changes in addition to the City of Galt Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Animal Care, Custody, and Control. Amends the general prohibition of keeping livestock, birds, and other animals. As Mr. Rice mentioned earlier, pigeons are not foul. In many corners, they're considered birds. Section 6.04090, to identify pigeons expressly prohibited unless kept in accordance with the city code, meaning new regulations. Adds section 6.04.110, Restrictions on keeping pigeons aligned for care for keeping of racing, homing pigeons subject to certain conditions. Again, we just kinda went over that. Maximum 10 pigeons per parcel. Owner must be an active member of an established racing or homing pigeon organizations. Pigeons must only race between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. One of the things that I learned is, there's the one group, they drop them off in Reno and they come back. And up to 10%, I believe, I'll double check that, die on the way back. And they can die anywhere. And when they die, they're falling out of the sky. They could be falling into your backyard, onto your roof, you name it. So we wanna establish the regulations. We also wanna work with community members that feel that having pigeons is something they wanna do, but we wanna make an ordinance that is gonna impact our community in a positive way. Any questions?
So TJ, so I spoke to a couple people today on this. One of them actually is someone who used to raise racing pigeons in another city, doesn't, hasn't done it in years and years, but he gave me some insight to it, was very eye-opening. He was asking me, well, how many, how many birds are gonna be allowed? Because he wanted, I was asking, what do you think's fair, you know? And I had told him about a situation, so in my old neighborhood that I no longer live in, there's, there is someone who used to, one of the situations that Mr. Rice was aware of. And it was really bad, the neighbors, I spoke to one of those neighbors who still isn't that neighbor today, and, you know, the dander would blow over, the smell is just horrendous, really bad, not maintained, so fell into the squarely maintained, maybe if it had maintained it better, maybe it wouldn't have been a big of a nuisance, but was a huge problem and, and he was really happy to hear that we were talking about this tonight because they're still dealing with an issue to that point. But in that particular case, there was 200 birds.
Yes.
200 on the place, the location that we're talking about, Mr. Rice. So that is huge. The other gentleman I spoke to, he said that around 30 or 40 is a more appropriate number that could be managed and maintained and kept clean. 10 on the thing, to me, after hearing that, seems a little low. I don't know, I mean, I'm not a pigeon expert, I'm just telling you that that seems low. He said that, you know, somewhere around 25 or 30 seems really easily manageable, that you could keep those birds, keep them, you know, maintained, and your neighbors wouldn't even know it, according to him. But, but yeah, I, I think it's, yeah. When I used to live over there, they would do laps over my house, and there was like floods of like 30 or 40 of them in groups, and they sound like airplanes going over when they go by in a mass group, like that's kinda crazy. But anyways, I just wanted to add that information that I had found out today, so just for the council. So, any questions, any thoughts for Mr. Goddaddy?
I think my question, Mr. Rice already gave the answer to that question, that same question, why are we doing that? So he already gave the answer to that. Thank you, City Manager.
We do have a public comment. Does anybody wanna talk, or you wanna hear the public comment first? Okay, public comment.
Phyllis?
I'd like to qualify it first. Born and raised in the Bronx, New York, my father was one of the originators of the Bronx Homing Pigeon Club. He wouldn't move out here without his pigeons. Elk Grove allowed him a back porch area to the home where he had pigeons. Everything on here is correct except for one item. The 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for training, that doesn't hold, and I'll explain to you why. They're housed here in Galt, but it's for the races. If they're in a homing pigeon club, there's races, they're putting money on those races. It depends on wind and wherever the distance is. More than likely, the training will not be done where the coop is. It could be miles away. That part is a little tricky. But as far as everything else, I would totally agree with it and say it's a beautiful program. And I, for one, would like to help wherever I can. I was born and raised with it. I knew a pigeon before I knew anything else.
Thank you.
But like I said, everything's okay, but that part there, it, little tricky because of what the training involves. Thank you.
Thank you for that insight. We appreciate that, Phyllis. Any thoughts?
I just, I guess here's a question, because obviously if you have to be 50 feet from your property lines, for, for the 10, that makes sense, except for, I wanna know how many properties within the city would even qualify for that. Your property size, I mean, the 7,000 square foot property is not going to be able to have any pigeons. Because that's what I have and I measure, I was figuring it out.
Well, I don't have a number count of how many properties, but I could tell you it's probably gonna be in the larger lot zones, so the R1As, the 10,000 square foot lot minimum zones, and there are a handful of those. You do see scattered, you know, rural residential around, but you're right, it might be difficult to fit in the standard 65 or 5,500 square foot lot.
Yeah, I think, I, yeah, I think, I'm thinking too, there's no way I could do, I mean, not that I'm looking at raising pigeons.
Maybe on my roof.
But, but I think, but I think, yeah, I don't even think 50 feet would even qualify in my yard. Maybe, maybe we should be, I don't know. Let's hear from the other public comment, and then I wanted to share an idea.
Joan?
Joan and I used to be neighbors, she knows.
Thank you. I'm Joan Warblein. Yeah, I lived on the street. Our street is seven houses long. It's a small street and it's opens onto cul-de-sacs. The person we're talking about ended up with 200 pigeons. He started out with maybe 10 or 15. And under the guise of racing pigeons. My brother, when we were in high school, my brother was a cop here in Galt, he had racing pigeons. And they require a lot of care, they're very susceptible to thrush and other problems. The guy across the street, when he got into having all of these pigeons, the cages were along the fences, they were attached to the fences, and he had to bring in a huge crane to pick those things up over our houses when he finally got rid of the pigeons. I have pictures of my cars that look like a bad white paint job. And that wasn't, when they release those pigeons, they don't go straight up. They hover, they go round and round and round. And pigeons that are well, don't usually drop pigeon poop. They're, the healthy pigeons don't do that while they're flying. So that was our first clue that these birds were not being properly taken care of. I don't know who's gonna supervise what's proper care, but I can tell you, even 10 pigeons, the smell came over the fences and the feathers in the backyard were everywhere, and it wasn't just on his property. And when they, you know, they circle around and saying from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, the racing times are different, so, you know, the pigeons don't keep time, they just fly home. So it's a problem, and if you, I think 10, maybe even that could be a problem for neighbors. And you're right, the pigeon coops are not gonna be 50 feet from the fence unless you have a good sized yard. So I would caution you that having, we definitely need the ordinance, I live the horror of it, but I would say you need to not just make the ordinance tonight and move on, you need to keep tabs on it. Because pigeons multiply, and this guy started selling them, you know, racing pigeons, so he had a business going. And then we, also, the next thing, wave that came were the hawks that were after the pigeons. And we had to deal with that. My brother finally told the guy he should, you know, get some tumblers, which take the hawk's attention away from them. So he didn't know what he was doing. But anyhow, that's my two cents, but it was a nightmare.
Thank you, Joan. Yeah, I would like to add that the neighbor I spoke with today mentioned that there was a really big uptick in critters, like possums and raccoons that would come into the neighborhood for the sole purpose of going into the people's backyards and getting the, the food, the bird food that was thrown out of the pens and stuff. So it was a whole wildlife attraction. So, yeah.
Well, I would, I would like to clarify why I'm asking about the, I'm not in any way suggesting that it needs to be a shorter distance. I guess the reason why I'm asking is if there's only a handful of properties that could even, yeah, accommodate this, why is our ordinance not know homing pigeons? That's just my question. I mean, because I feel like we're, we're accommodating the rich at this point, to have a pet project outside that hopefully they'll take care of when 98% of the rest of the city has no ability to even have a chance to, to have this pet project. That's just where my thought was.
I actually am thinking the other way, like, I, I believe we need something to correct on on this, but I also think that, I think it's silly to say, you can have this, we're not gonna tell you don't have, you can't have it as long as you have it, you know, as long as you have a hundred foot distance around it or 50, you know, I mean, you just, you're pretty much eliminating everybody, so it's almost, it's almost worded a little unfairly, in my opinion. I think maybe, is there a way we could base it on the size of your lot? Like, you can have five birds if your, if your, if your housing lot is, you know, 7,000 or less, or, or you can have up to 10 birds if it's over 7,000 or 8,000, you know, something like that, where 10's still the cap, but we're allowing a smaller person to raise just a few birds. I mean, you still have the maintenance, you still have all that other verbiage, which is, gives us teeth in the ordinance. I'm just, I don't know, this is just me, I'm trying, I'm just trying to be fair too.
You could tailor a program like that, it would be a little bit more challenging to, you know, enforce, but not impossible.
But then again, somebody might say, well, it's useless to have, I mean, if we had an expert in here, they might tell us that it's useless to even have 10 birds, so why bother? That, that's what somebody might tell us if they were here, I don't know.
No, to me, like, based on what I have heard from those that we've dealt with in the city that have had 200 and 100 pigeons, 10 pigeons wouldn't work for them, you know, that the racing folks need that combination of numbers, you know, and what they do. So the 10 is really a reflection of those who just do it recreationally, for the most part.
Yeah. And like I said, the gentleman that told me today, he said, I used to do this for a living, or as a hobby, or whatever, and he said 40 birds is like the sweet spot, 30 to 40, anything more than that becomes really unruly. So again, we're talking about 10, it's like you're almost just kind of.
So I think that, in my, in my opinion, the current, well, the proposed ordinance provides the opportunity for some to have pigeons. The question, you know, council can have of themselves is, you know, 40 pigeons in Galt or 100 pigeons, is that, is that okay? You know, so then if you decrease the setback, you know, then are you then impacting the other neighbors? And, you know, and I think that's the football, maybe you've gotta kick around.
The biggest aspect then is the inspection process. I mean, you know, as Mr. Rice said, we could do it, but, you know, and you said the lot size, right? For every, probably 10 homeowners, you don't have five or six that are only pigeons. It's probably, you know, maybe a small percentage. You know, whatever code gets applied, you know, we'll, we'll do due diligence to make sure that we're consistent with, with our approach. Just, one of the things that I've learned in dealing with roosters and chickens, we had a location by pizza guys that had over 100 roosters two years ago, and that was a nightmare. The roosters were up on the roofs and it took two years and close to 6,000 in fines to, to get that resolved. To me, a lot of times with the pigeons, it's not the, it's, it's the human error that will create these issues. You know, you have folks that can manage this, you may have folks that can't, and then, you know, we're gonna have to regulate that, that component of it too. But I, you know, the, the code has, we have to be specific, we have to be specific with setbacks, because we don't want, even if you have 20 or 10, we don't want your, you know, pushing up to somebody's fence, right? It gets to the aspects of the, the feathers and, and the, and the dust and the feces and the, you name it. So the goal is to try to, try to create a code that, that can be fair and, and work for people that wanna have pigeons, but also not have a negative impact on, on neighbors in that area to where the neighbor does have pigeons, and the goal is not to let them know it.
Yeah. Yeah. Ms. Johnson, I apologize, but you're only able to speak one time per agenda item, I'm sorry. I know you probably got some really good information for us, but that's the rule and I gotta stick to it. I'm sorry. I don't know, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to be fair here, like, I wanna, you know, I think we should need to have this, but I also just think like, I'm almost like, I don't know, the 10 number, it's like we're going from someone having 200, which is clearly excessive, down to like 10, which I feel like is, is just gonna eliminate the hobby altogether. I don't know.
Yeah, what do you think, is 50 is fair?
Well, if you're gonna do a 50 foot setback, I mean, I think that's gonna eliminate most people anyways. I think if you do like 25 birds, but you still have to have the 50 foot setbacks, that means that you're gonna have somebody who's gonna have a massive lot, maybe have 25 birds. I don't think that's unmanageable. I don't know. I'm open minded to this.
If you wanna make sure it will be, you know, fair with everybody, so if there is a possibility to decrease the, instead of 50, even they have a 30.
I wish I knew more about the industry.
So I don't, I'm not expert on that, but.
You know, honestly, I don't think any lot, I don't care how big they are, maybe these, these homes that have been annexed in that have an acre or something like that, because if you think, you have a house on this lot, and that lot's big to cover the house footprint, and if you have to have that cage to be 50 feet from your back neighbor, and 50 feet from your, from your side neighbors, your house is in the middle of that. I just think, I just think the whole thing is silly that we even have it, personally. I don't think there's a, a property in this, in this city that would be able to accommodate that. And if that's the goal, then why just not get rid of it?
I don't wanna belabor the topic, but she's right. I mean, if you got a coop that's, that's, that's two feet by two feet square, just hypothetically, you're literally gonna have to have a lot that's 103, 104 feet to be, to be 50 feet from all different whatever, so it's like, what's the, I don't know, who, what lot in Galt is that big?
Right.
I don't know. Mr. Pratton, you, any, any thoughts on this?
I'd like to move on.
Well, I'm just looking for.
I mean, we could have an ad hoc committee look into this or something, I don't know, but I think that TJ has done his homework and this is what he's come up with, so we either need to.
Well, let me ask you TJ, in your research, what have you found is, from the, in the industry, what is the typical number of birds?
Sweet spot is anywhere between 40 and about 80.
See, that's what I heard.
Setbacks have to be met. To me, the human error component is, is the part that the enforcement aspect, the compliance aspect, you have to establish that. If, if we're gonna enact and, and adopt this code, we have to make sure that we're consistent as far as.
Well, let me, let me cut right to this. This is what it seems like, and to get off the subject, because I know Mr. Pratton wants to get done, and I do too. What it looks like here is, we're either, we're trying to do one of two things. We're either trying to allow somebody to have racing pigeons under, under, under certain parameters, or we're looking to just eliminate people having racing pigeons. Really, that's what we're doing. The way that's worded now, we're pretty much eliminating people having pigeons. Get, am I wrong? We're not, yeah. So, so you decide what we're trying to do. Are we trying to make it reasonable for someone to still have these, but have some, some parameters? Or we're, we're making the word this thing, so it's just really not gonna be possible? Right?
So are you looking to up the amount of pigeons that they can have, or change the setback? Or both?
I would say if you leave the setback, up the amount of birds, probably not gonna matter, or we keep the, the amount of birds at 10 and change the setback slightly. I think 50's a little ridiculous. I think 50 is a little ridiculous, I don't know. I don't know, I don't know.
Can I give you an example of something different? And I think Councilmember Rodriguez and I had this discussion where hen chickens, you're allowed to have four and the setback is 10, but the thought is there's less, you know, there's, you know, less, there's less birds. So with the less birds, you have less of a noise impact and other impacts on the neighbors. So the whole goal of the setback is to limit the impact on the neighbors.
Okay, well, if you got four, if you got four chickens and you got to have 10 feet, right?
Correct.
Well, we're talking about 10 birds, which is basically, you know, two thirds more roughly, right? So if you do two thirds more than 10 feet, you're at 30 feet. So I'm just saying.
So if the wish, if the wish of the council is to change the setback to 30 feet, we can accommodate that.
Look, if we decide to go 10 birds and 30 feet and just draw the ordinances is, if we find out that code enforcement comes back in six months and say, look, we're having a real problem or whatever, we can always change it again.
Yeah.
Right? I don't know.
I think you could always change it. I'm trying not to use a pun right now, but you could always change it. I mean, there are times code enforcement use, I mean, you could say that the setbacks requirements is intended to prevent the use. But if that was the case, the city would just prohibit it outright. I think the idea is you want to allow it on larger lots, ranch style properties, ag style properties, to the extent they've been annexed in front to the city. And so that's essentially what it is. But obviously the council can change it anytime and see how this, you know, use this ordinance as a pilot program, so to speak, and see, see if the masses are clamoring for greater.
I know. If we use a 30 foot, let me just, my last comment, if we use 30 feet, you essentially would have to have 60 feet. You'd have to have a lot that's 60 feet. I think you're looking at least an 8,000 square foot lot to have that much distance. So that, that is a larger lot and more.
60 from the back, or 30 from the back too.
Right, I know, so you're.
Right on top of your house. I have a 7,000 square foot.
Yeah, 7,000 wouldn't be big enough, you wouldn't really do it. I don't know, I'm proposing we use the 30 foot and the 20 bird and the 10 bird. That's what I'm proposing, but I'm open minded just to move this thing along, whatever you guys want to do. Somebody can make a motion. Or I can make a motion. I make a motion to move with one change, that we change the setback to 30 feet with everything else as written.
Okay.
Somebody wants to make an alternate motion, they can please do so, or they can second mine?
Yeah, we have to get a second first.
I'll second it.
All right. Any alternate motions? No? Okay. All right, we have a motion moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Reed. Are we clear on the verbiage?
Yeah, I have it.
Everything as written except for the setback 30 feet, okay. Now you'll report back to us and you can come back to me in six months and go, that was stupid what you did because it's been a problem, whatever, and then we can talk about it, all right?
Uh, 12 months.
Yeah, okay, or whenever. All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratt?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez? No. Mayor Farmer?
Yes. All right, motion approved four to one. I just want to remind everybody that I'm not the one that brought the pigeon ordinance to the meeting tonight. This wasn't my request to have this agenda. All right, moving on, communications, do we have any this evening?
None.
City clerks report?
None.
Comments by staff?
Parks Director Armando Solis? I don't know how I can follow that, but I will try. Unfortunately, I have some bad news. Today, our chemical controller for our pool burnt out and we had ordered a replacement. And before you ask, why don't we have a spare part? Because it's $18,000 to replace it. We have one on order, Aqua Sources come through on an emergency purchase and we hope to have it up and running by Thursday or Friday.
Wow. Well, on that happy note, a couple of comments, I want to let you know that we did have the second and final interviews for Community Development Director this past week. We have made a selection. They've accepted, but we can't make that public until background is complete. But we're really excited about the potential of this candidate and also the candidates that were in the final interviews. We had a good candidate pool. Mayor Farmer, we did look at the property owner of that property that you were questioning earlier. And it is in private hands, the entire parcel. So we'll make sure that they comply with.
By the Dry Creek?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't know if you were talking pigeons still or fires.
No, I should have clarified. I'm trying to be brief. You know, well, I'm already out of the pool, so it doesn't matter. And then the other thing I would like to add, I'm going to be out of the office on vacation next week. And so while I'm gone, at least for the first part of the week, Assistant City Manager Amy Mendez will be in charge. And then at the end of the week, I believe she's also on vacation. So we'll both be available and be able to help direct you where you may need to go if issues come up.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it for comments by staff?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving on, item P, comments by city council members, future agenda items. Mr. Pratt?
Well, I guess we, we addressed the Adair thing, we're going to, it's going to be on the 20th. I just wanted to verify that. Just to clarify, not that I need to get home and get to bed, because I got all the time in the world. I just felt, feel like when we go on like that on a subject like this, we're making all these poor folks sit out here. So for future reference, if we're not sure, we either create a motion or we don't, so. That's all. Sorry to be a jerk. Well, if you don't get a second, then there's no question, so.
Point taken, thank you, Matt. Mr. Vice Mayor?
First of all, thank you for the staff. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. Thank you, TJ. Thank you all staff doing a hard work. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for everybody come to this meeting. Thank you, that's all tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
Two things, everybody don't forget about the Saturday markets, you know, they're, they're very nice and very enjoyable to go out and just hang out downtown Galt. The second thing is, for people that don't know, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. So we have eight dispatchers that work for the Galt Police Department and the Consumers Fire District is dispatched by the Sacramento Regional Communication Center, which has 42 dispatchers that work for them. So I just wanted to say thank you and recognize them during this week.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rodriguez?
First, on the lighter side, I attended the Valley Oaks Grange tea that they have Saturday. And it was, not that I wasn't, I was expecting a bad thing, but it was actually really fun. It was kind of fun to see a different group of people and their willingness to support good causes. The Galt 4H was there as well, and so they received support. And they honored the, I want to say the Sacramento, South Sacramento Seroptemus attended and awarded one of our Galt High students a scholarship. And when they said what this young woman has done in her short life, I tried to figure out what the heck I've done in the last years, so. But she, yes, we just have phenomenal people here in town and phenomenal youth. It's just amazing to see. I, I am glad that we are going to bring Adair to the agenda. But before that, I would like to see if, whether your two by two happens before then or if we can meet with Chief Rodriguez. I actually live literally around the corner from Walvis that's happening. So if the two by two doesn't meet, I would love to see if we can have at least a couple of us meet and with staff and maybe discuss this issue, because I have heard solutions come up for this. And after pondering them, I think that will might bring other issues. So we need to look at this as a whole. I do feel for those people on Adair. I do drive that regularly, going 25 miles an hour. And I do not take that as a shortcut to the house, to my house, because it actually is, takes longer that way and I don't think people know that. So somehow, also if we can look in to see if there's any way to contact Google Maps or whoever the higher, you know, whoever's up there telling people what direction to go, if there's any way to get a message out there that that's not the way to go. I, I think we need to be looking into some of these alternatives. And I paid close attention today when I was coming home. The, there are, the truck route signs or no truck route signs are almost invisible. There's one up and it's not in a proper place. So I did talk to Mr. Pratt at one point and he indicated that it's possible that when they were doing some road work or something, that they were taken down temporarily or when Morale Estates was doing stuff, that we just need, that's one thing, that's an easy step. We can at least try to get the no truck route. And if we can enforce or at least make it feel like we're enforcing those semis, because those truck drivers can only get, you know, a certain amount of tickets and then they're done with their career. And so they don't want that. So if we can make sure that at least one step of getting those big trucks out of that neighborhood, that would be one little help. But anyway, I would love to sit and talk to Chief Rodriguez with another council member or with staff, or if, like I said, the two by two meets, that would be an appropriate time to talk about it.
The two by two is not scheduled till July 17th, so that's not going to work. But I can tell you that this was discussed in, very extensively in the Public Safety Committee meeting when we were there last time. And TJ was there and TJ was given the direction that he was going to go out and talk to the businesses there that have the trucks frequent them, Walmart, Rayleigh's, those ones, and re-explain to them to, to tell their drivers that this is not the route and that they were going to also, I think, talk to the trucking companies as well.
So Tim, if you don't mind, we did this about 10 years ago, right where, the gas station on North Lincoln. Similar thing, we had trucks using that route. We were able to reach out to a lot of the trucking companies that use Cow Waste, Cardinal Glass and all that. And we had a really kind of positive impact. So have a letter, getting drafted, I'm working with Captain Small. The goal is to get it out to the retailers in the area, have them send it out to the trucking companies, let them know these are the truck routes, this is the maps of the truck routes. Give them some time to comply and then after that, we have, it's chapter 10.40 within our Muni code that we can utilize to kind of help enforce and then trafficking with PD, they can enforce traffic. But that's information that'll be going out shortly.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm glad we're bringing it back to you. I just would like to, I think it's important, I agree with you, we, there needs to be a meeting at least to get some input from fire before that meeting. So we at least have that, so we don't have to say, well, what about the fire thing? And then we're all guessing. We'd like to know what fires take on that is. But I, but I think.
We will bring that back because the public safety meeting had dialogue from the fire department specifically on that. I just want to make sure there's already clarity on that staff report.
Okay, but I would like to see, and I'm sure this is going to be brought, but I know there was some vehicle counts done. I would like to see that information as part of that item. And also, I would like to just see what are, any and all options that we could do. From extreme to very little, I would like to see anything and everything between presented to us of what possibly could be done as part of that discussion. And lastly, I had two things. Oh, one is, and I do, you made a good point earlier, Matt. I just think with the Muni, all the Muni code discussions happening, especially with the meeting I missed, I wanted to be very deliberate when we're making a Muni code. So I wanted to make sure we had it nailed and not make it too vague, just because of all the discussions that are going on. So that's why we belabored that. So with that, I don't want to, I want to skip over anything else I had. I just last want to leave wishing, just want to leave with wishing my wife a happy 50th birthday today. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:45.